All right, thank you and welcome to this evening's joint meeting of the Kattati City Council and the successor agency to the former Kattati Community Redevelopment Agency. It is Tuesday, the 26th of March, 2019. And, whoops, there I am. And if we could have roll call, please.
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Harvey?
Here.
Mayor Deloso?
Here.
Vice Mayor Skilman?
Here.
Councilmember Lamon?
Here. I'd also like to introduce other members of our staff that are here this evening. You quickly got that introduction of all of our council members up here just now. We have our city manager Damian Obed, our city attorney Robin Donahue, our chief of police, Michael Parish, our city engineer, director of public works, longest title in the city of Kattati, Craig Scott, our administrative services director Angela Quarter. And I'm looking at you and I don't know who you are, oh my goodness.
I'm Olivia Gabriel and I'm presenting with Craig.
Lovely, thank you very much. And our city clerk Lauren Burgess. And with that, if you could please, I'd like to have our honorary mayor, please come to the podium to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you all very much for that. We are now at item four in our agenda, which is approval of minutes and the notice of waiving of reading of all resolutions and ordinances introduced and/or adopted under this agenda.
So moved. I'll second.
Motion to second, any further discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Make it a five oh vote in favor. And we are now to announcements. Meeting orientation for new attendees and viewers. In conformance with the Brown Act and the adopted city council rules, the meeting agenda includes items labeled as action items where the city council will consider the item and citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comments related to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda also includes a citizen's business item, which is the designated place on the agenda where citizens have the right to say whatever they wish. The city council may or may not choose to respond to comments as the government code allows. However, if the city council declines to respond, it should not be perceived as giving credence to or agreeing with any statements that the city council or its members believe are incorrect, misinformed, or purposefully biased. The city of Kattati has special open office hours on Monday evenings from 5:00 to 7:00 PM by appointment in the community development department at city hall as part of its Kattati Open for Business program. The program provides personalized assistance and information to developers, current Kattati business owners, and those interested in starting a new business within the city. The Kattati Ronard Park-Kattati Regional Library hosts events for all ages, including art exhibits, book clubs, and children's programs. All events are free and open to the public. For more information, call the library at (584) 9121 or visit sonomalibrary.org. The Kattati Historical Society Museum is open regularly at the second Tuesday of each month from 5:00 to 7:00 PM, Saturdays from 1:00 to 4:00 PM, and by appointment. For more information, call (707) 794-0305. Citizens interested in receiving City of Kattati community alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up at nixel.com or by texting your zip code, which is (94931), to (888) 777. And finally, the city offers a variety of recreation programs for all ages. See details on the web at kattatcity.org. We are now at item six, which is our honorary mayor. So Lydia Arguello is going to come up and give us a great update from two weeks ago. And I'll have everybody know not to embarrass her, which I really shouldn't even say this because it probably would just embarrass you, but her report is bound. She did an amazing job, there it is. There it is. Go ahead, Lydia.
Okay. So I did get reports from everyone in my classroom, not just my friends, about rec activities and places for teenagers to go, as well as city cleanup projects. Sixteen people agreed with the rec center and seventeen people agreed with the garbage pickup. A few students said that there should be counselors at the rec center, which I thought was a really good idea because most teenagers nowadays are really very sadly depressed and it's not a good thing. And four people out of the 23 didn't really have an opinion, just argued against what was said. And if you want, you can just pass this around and you can look at it. There are a few that really stuck out to me that I think will stick out to you as well. And that's why I want you to look at it, which is why I bound it in the first place.
That was very kind of you. Is that for us to keep?
No.
No.
You can have the paper, not the binder.
Got it, got it. If you could give it to Lauren, maybe she'll dismantle it and give you back that binder before you take off. So, thank you very much. No, you're not done yet. Come here, come here, come here, you're not done. We're gonna go around the table up here and see if anybody has any comments or questions. And I'm gonna start with councilmember Lamon.
Well, first of all, the first thing I noticed I thought was really very telling. When you went to get information and work on something in your community, I like the way you mentioned you went to everybody in your class and not just your usual circle of people that you usually are friendly with or deal with. That's smart and that's really a good way to do business. You know, I heard you mention some concerns about depression in teenagers and I wonder, certainly we don't have a rec center at this point, and certainly mental illness is a great problem in the community, we don't want that. But we don't have a rec center in the community right now, but I wonder if we could look into what resources there are through the county available and perhaps get that back to Lydia and she could share perhaps with student government or something, just so it's available. So if there's somebody that talks to a school counselor or a teacher or even to a friend like you've parents, you might be able to refer them. If we have something like that, I think that would be helpful. So, you know, I'd never thought of that and I want to thank you for bringing that to my attention, I really appreciate it.
All right, thank you very much. Vice Mayor Skilman?
Thank you for being here again tonight, really appreciate you and putting in that effort and getting everybody's input, that's great. And also, I don't know, one thing that I've known about is CHOPS in Santa Rosa, which I know is a bit of a haul for people who don't have driver's licenses and things like that. But that's kind of a cool resource, I know, for teens and stuff. But it would be nice if we had something local as well for people to be able to get to more easily. So that would be great. And I know I was listening, I haven't seen the actual study, but they were talking about sort of with the advent of social media, people's anxiety levels have increased and I think it's because you do feel like you always have to be camera ready or, you know, just there's something might get posted somewhere or somebody might comment on something. And so I just think there's a lot more pressure with social media that people of my generation or older, I'm glad we didn't have smartphones when I was in junior high and high school because there'd be a lot of embarrassing photos of me out there. Just being honest. So anyway, I can see that that would be an issue, so I'm glad that you touched on that and brought it to our attention. So, thank you again for being here.
All right, thank you very much. Councilmember Moore?
Well, thank you, Lydia. It seems like you did a nice amount of work on that. I had a question when you were talking about the garbage pickup. Can you elaborate on that a little bit?
So the garbage pickup would be like a community thing, like just going around as a group of people, like separate groups of people, maybe like a group of four or five? Just picking up trash for the community, just to help out, like at local creeks, local parks, really anywhere they can find trash and just put it where it belongs instead of throwing it on the floor?
Well, thank you. And it appears that you've done a pretty comprehensive job on that, so I'll look forward to reading it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Harvey?
Yes, thank you for the report. It occurs to me that, as was mentioned, you know, with the advent of social media and that's kind of how people communicate these days with one another, they don't really have as much social interaction. So I think that it was wonderful that you did reach out to individuals and actually speak with them and get their feedback because I think that we have sort of a generation of folks that kind of don't get that one-on-one interaction with one another as much as there used to be. So I think that that was great, that you did that. And hopefully we can act upon some of those things. I really like the idea of the cleanup. Maybe we can, you know, work towards having some cleanup and then maybe having refreshments afterwards to encourage folks to participate. But thank you again and thank you for being here.
Yes, Lydia did a great job, as was to be expected from your previous presentation a couple of weeks ago. Do you have anybody you would like to introduce that came with you this evening? She slowly turns.
My parents came.
Hi.
And my principal.
Pardon?
My principal.
And your principal, even better. So, is there any extra credit involved with her doing this?
No.
So, before you leave, we're all gonna come down. This is more importantly a cue for those people who have phones, if they'd like to take a picture of the group as we hand you this certificate. Okay, just plugging you guys in, all right, very good. So we're gonna come down. All right, we will now move into, oh, by the way, we know that this is a school night, Lydia, and so we kind of, we would expect you to stay till about 11:30 or midnight. So if that's okay, but you can leave at any point in time. All right. Item seven is approval of the final agenda. Do we have any changes?
No proposed changes, mayor.
No changes, all right, very good. Now we're at item eight, which is citizen's business and public comment for the consent calendar items. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any items listed on the consent calendar or any matters not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to city council policy 2017-02, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. The mayor may extend the time limit for a reasonable time where a disability accommodation has been requested. And I don't have any speaker cards at this point, so is there anyone? Yes, Ms. Alderman?
I wanted to talk about tomorrow's strategic planning meeting. For one thing, it's in the police community room and not a lot of people want to go through the police station, be filmed to be going to a council meeting. There is no reason, it cannot be here. This is the council chambers, this is not, you're abusing special meetings. It's, this has been scheduled for weeks and weeks and it's a regular city council meeting, it is not a special meeting. You have no materials posted, so we're supposed to go in tomorrow, get the packet, I guess, you'll have of the materials, then we have one chance to speak and then we're supposed to shut up the rest of the meeting. The room is not accessible, Lauren says she'll put a table and everything in the corner. You don't have the equipment I need. There is no room, reason why, it won't be webcast, it's, you're trying to hold a secretive meeting and it's against the Brown Act, you're not, you're not, we have a right to speak on every agenda item. You usually let us speak, but on the agenda items, but it's not on the agenda that we have a right to speak to that one. This is not a special meeting. You need to get off of this, you've done it for this year to keep people out. I know a lot of, and you disrespect us by putting us in a corner while you guys sit in a square of tables. And last year I needed an accessible table and I sat there. There's only been two people, it's not like you have a crowd all these years. So, you need to really work on putting the council chambers, having it webcast, putting it on Kattati TV, we didn't even get the last meeting, the channel 28 on. So, the other things, I'm still waiting for my apology from Mr. Moore for his writing a derogatory comment on his city email account. I shouldn't have to be waiting nine months now. Please don't do that. You guys need to really look at your ethics and how you do business around here. Thank you.
Ms. Alderman, before you leave, any comments on consent while you're there?
Oh, I just wanted to mention one little thing. A lot of people on the Kessler Ranch contacted me because they were upset that the trees were cut down without a lot of the knowledge or public hearing or anything.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Mr. Berich?
Good evening, council. Lori Alderman is absolutely spot-on correct about the special meeting plan for tomorrow night. I could not have put it any better. It's just such an embarrassment, such a sham. We've gone through so many of these special meetings over the years and these mistakes keep adding up and piling up. Your total disregard for proper procedure and any kind of morality in conducting these meetings is just shocking. For the benefit of the public, my name is George Berich, I'm a former city councilman here. I try to remind the city council over and over again to please refer to me as Councilman Berich. I earned that title by serving with honor and dignity during these proceedings some 10 years ago. About 10 years ago, we actually had a city council where there was diversity of thought, which represented the diversity in our community. I was very proud of exposing the blatant racism that was practiced on the council. I was proud of exposing the communists and the atheists and people who tried to get rid of the moment of silence and eventually even the Pledge of Allegiance, but we were able to stop that by just one vote. We were on track some 10 years ago to taking back Kattati and bringing real Kattati pride back to this town and restoring our reputation in the county. And then it all went south because of a lack of diversity and a lack of tolerance and a lack of ability to get along with others that you may have a different point of view In fact, when I was on the council, I was not allowed to put anything on an agenda, meeting agenda. It was obscene. I like to talk about weed abatement in Kattati, which is the law, that this town is supposed to address weed abatement and it looks like we have no plans right now to address weed abatement that's coming up soon, which will be a public health danger. And I'd like to see somebody with some integrity to put this issue on the agenda before any property or lives are lost from a wildfire. We haven't seen any wildfires, maybe you guys can check the news, do a little research. And I understand that the video webcast of our last meeting on March 13th, some 13 days ago or something, was offline for 13 days and just came online again today. So for 13 days, the thousands and thousands of dollars that we spent on this system failed again or was misoperated or mismanaged, I really don't know what. It should really concern all of you, how this continues to go on as you use taxpayers' money to put in systems like this that I advocated for over 20 years and you still can't get it right.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to comment under citizen's business? All right, seeing no one, I'll go ahead and close the public comment. And we will move into item nine, which is the consent calendar. We have just one item on consent, so I'd be looking for a motion.
I move to approve item 9A and I would like to add a comment with that. I have spoken with staff on the CCR, CCNRs, and had some questions and concerns which they will be addressing as they work with the developer, so I just wanted to thank them for that.
All right, very good. Is there a second?
I've moved, I would second. Excuse me.
That was a second, right?
That was a second.
That wasn't quite sure.
Very poorly executed, but yes.
Very fine. Is there any further discussion? No, seeing none. Could we have a vote then? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Please show that's a five oh vote in favor of, thank you very much. And item 10 is direction on future agenda items. Does anybody have any items? Mr. Moore?
I'm wondering if we can actually address that potential of a teen center and a community center down the road or we might look at something like that. Especially with the summer months coming up, that might be a good opportunity.
Anyone else have any items?
Nothing.
Nope. All right. Thank you very much. Staff got that up, obviously. Yeah, okay, great. All right, now we go to item 11, which is our regular agenda. Give me just a moment to find that page. All right, and our first item, item A is appropriation for Jamie Lane subdivision consultant agreements. And I believe I will turn that over to our city manager.
Thank you, mayor, members of the council. So, like most subdivisions here, we have many names for things and that way, I guess it's job security or something. But this is the subdivision on the corner of Ryan Lane and East Kattati Avenue, a pending subdivision. There's a vacant lot there right now, opposite Santerway by the train station. And previously, there, a private developer had planned a six-unit development there and they had hit a tentative map on the project. And then the recession happened and so it's one of these older projects. The city subsequently purchased the, or basically purchased the property, took the property. And we've been, since, basically since we purchased it, we've been looking for ways to move that forward as an affordable housing project with RDA money, so it's an affordable housing development. And so for years, we'd been working with, more recently with the Sonoma Housing Land Trust, and actually we have the executive director here tonight. And through a lot of hard work by the Housing Land Trust, I think we found a solution to get this subdivision built, which is great. And like the staff report says, originally it was six units. Based on the standard floor plans of these homes that we'd be putting in there, it would reduce to five units. But still, it would be a nice little subdivision that, the plan would be that the city would then, if the council approves tonight, the city would entitle the project, get it ready basically for building permits, and then sell the project to Housing Land Trust, who would then manage the construction of the project itself and also operate it in the long run, like the land trust does. So they have that model, the housing model, of managing projects for the long term. So you don't just build an affordable development and then walk away from it. So, it's a really good model and we've used it successfully before. So we're happy that the land trust is interested in partnering with us on this. This action tonight is to, is a request to appropriate funding from the Inclusionary Housing Fund to basically pay for the engineer and the architect to get this project through entitlement. We have, in addition to the engineer and architect, we have some other associated design services. We have the environmental consultant, the landscape architect, engineering plan check, and then city staff. That would all be donating time to the project to help move it forward in the lowest cost way possible so that it's feasible for construction. So that's, it's always the challenge with these smaller subdivisions, there's just a lot of cost to build a project and, you know, if you have a big development, it's easier because you can spread the costs out and smaller developments, it's just more of a challenge. So, with that, I think I'll just leave it there. I will ask Dev to come up for a moment and just introduce herself if you don't know her, just tell you a little bit about the Housing Land Trust.
Good evening, Mayor Deloso, councilmembers, staff. Damian, always a pleasure. I'm happy to be before you, I've met many of you before. Housing Land Trust of Sonoma County was established in 2002 and we partner with really all the cities in Sonoma County. We've got homes in Padaluma, Kattati, we've got five homes here, Santa Rosa, Ronard Park, Healdsburg, Cloverdale, now in Sonoma. And I don't think I'm forgetting anybody, but the idea is that as a nonprofit, we partner with our local municipalities to really be adjunct staff. And the city has the burden of providing housing to the workforce, to our citizens. And the land trust model focuses on workforce housing, that's all we do. And so we come in and talk to the cities about what your housing goals are and what the housing element says, and we are in every housing element in the county, with the county and every city. And then we go to work with your staff to meet those goals. And once we have housing in place, the homes and the families there that we have qualified based on your criteria for who you want to house are stewarded in perpetuity. The ground lease, which is the mechanism we use to make the homes affordable, essentially works like this. You take the house and you take the land and you separate it. The house is sold directly to the qualifying buyer based on their paycheck. The land is taken off the speculative market and it's held in trust for the public benefit. So think of Yosemite, Muir Woods, any kind of public park. You know it's there for the public benefit today, for a single use, and tomorrow, and for generations. This is the same model. The land is taken off the market, held in trust, not bought, not sold, but stewarded for one singular purpose. The house that sits on top of that lot will always serve a family in that income level and no matter what happens to the land around it, will always have that land for that purpose in your city. So, the homes are affordable in perpetuity. The loan that the homeowners get, that we have a whole team, lender title, the entire team, it's a 30-year fixed. We do everything we can to mirror the experience of being inclusive in our community. Buying a market rate home is out of reach for people who are the fabric of our community. We house many teachers, medical personnel, city employees and such, people who really are the volunteers and provide the day-to-day services. But more and more are priced out and in order to recruit and retain our workforce, we use housing as really the vehicle to get there. So we're proposing to work once again and Damian made a lot of great points, it is a small subdivision, and I want to share with you that there are a lot of interested parties watching this project. We partner with Sonoma State University to house our faculty and their personnel in general. With SCO, the Sonoma County Office of Education, we're their official housing partner. And the city of Padaluma is also watching this, the county, and also the Director of Disaster Resiliency and Recovery for Fannie Mae was just here last week. And we went out to Jamie Lane. And so, we are going to do this in Kattati, but this is really a model, because there's a few new components that we're throwing into this, that people are watching so that it can be replicated. And so when you do a prototype, it makes sense to do something small, to work out all the kinks and make sure it's going to be replicable and then the economies of scales, the scale will come into play at that point. So I thank you for your attention, I can tell you a lot more about the model if you wish. Look into questions.
Great. Any questions before we go to public comment? I'll start. I'll start with Councilmember Harvey.
Do you, do you have any experience with defaults? Are there many defaults? And what do you do about that? If there are, how does, how's that handled?
So we've been doing this for 16 years. We have housed 79 families. We have 30 homes under construction, 109 in the pipeline. And one of the cornerstones of what we do is stewardship. We're in touch with our homeowners once a month. In addition to that, there's ongoing counseling for attending to your property taxes, maintaining your homes, ongoing communication. So that is one of the unique things about the land trust model. During the, the time where we had many foreclosures and defaults around the country, the land trust model, there are 225 of them, and I'm one of the founders of the National Community Land Trust Network as well, so I work nationally on this. The land trust across the nation had one-eighth of the foreclosure rate, and that's because of the stewardship. There's someone to call. And so we have dealt with it successfully. We have never had anyone go into default or foreclosure because of the stewardship, I think.
Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Moore question?
I did. Thank you. And I'm sorry, I missed your name when you came up?
Dev.
Dev.
My last name is Getzus.
G-E-T-C-H-U-S?
More or less, yeah.
Pause that.
I hope my husband's not watching. Means good house in, in Dutch, I think.
That's appropriate.
Cover my bases. 31 years later, I, I don't need any trouble.
When you talk about the, the Housing Land Trust of Sonoma County, and that the trust itself owns the land, and you have the building that's on that land, and then that stays into trust in perpetuity, the land, what happens at the, at the conclusion of the mortgage on that, or, or the selling of that particular unit?
The home stays within, in the family for as long as someone is there, and when they sell, they need to sell to someone who is in the same income level that they were in. It's a pay-it-forward model, and the goal is to say, stop renting, start owning, have the security of ownership. That way, we as a community retain our workforce, then people can build that NASDAQ that can get them into a market rate house. And then the next family is the new owner, and this goes on generation after generation. Now, if your heir qualifies with the criteria that you have set as the city, then they are able to live there, and this continues. If they don't qualify, then we would find a household that did, and the ass, and the sale, the proceeds from the sale would go to the heir. So it's an asset for the family, and once you're done paying your 30-year mortgage, you, you stay in the house as long as you want. Does that answer your question? But the, the land is always retained by the trust with an eye for the future. So it's a pay-it-forward model.
So if you have an occupant that's been in there for 30 years and they paid off that mortgage, now that value of that home is capped at?
The value of the home is tied to the paycheck. That's the, the, the model is that the price of the home has nothing to do with the market. It has to do with the paycheck. People earn a certain amount of money, and we want them to spend no more than about a third of their income on all their housing costs. So they buy the house for a limited restricted price, below market, and when they sell, they sell tied to the AMI. So for example, in 2006, the AMI in Sonoma County was about $74,000 for a family of four at 100% AMI. Fast forward 10 years, that same family of four at 100% of AMI was now earning $82,400 For sure, I can tell you, the difference in the AMI from 2006 to 2016 was 9.72%, okay? So same income level, but that family's earning a little bit more. If the initial buyer bought the house for $300,000, they would be able to sell that home for 9.72% more, which means $29,000 more. Their total equity would be three things. One, whatever the AMI increase is, however much incomes have gone up. That does two things. One, the person who's selling the house is capturing the appreciation in area median income, and the person who's buying the house is buying the house, and it is as affordable to their paycheck as it was to the initial buyer. Two, part of the equity is whatever you've paid down on your mortgage, because you haven't been renting, and if you had a knee-down payment. So the idea is to really recruit and retain, and then move on to that market rate house, to have that mechanism here.
Are there any provisions if the homeowner is in a sudden windfall and their AMI is exceedingly higher?
Once you're in the house, you're in the house.
Okay, so there's no checkbacks in that regard?
There, that is how it is with ownership. With rentals, you do income verification. With homeownership programs, you generally don't. But we have had people come into a big inheritance, and you know what they do? They move.
Well, then they don't have the restrictions maybe on there or something like that.
They don't have the restrictions, and the best thing that could happen to our program is for it to go away because there was market correction. We're really here to help.
Well, and, and I know that with the Burbank housing model, that you'll have your initial qualifications, and then if you end up making more money down the road, they don't really have a, a checkback on that either, but I guess you can't have a perfect system.
Well, I think this is pretty perfect in that I'm, by the way, a special ed teacher. I was completely recruited for this job. None of my board were housers, if you will, and I myself had a fantastic nonprofit I had founded and was running in San Francisco, and I drove 40 miles each way, expecting two children, two separate times. It was a lot of driving, and I was priced out, basically. And so I don't want to see that happen again. So this is really a model where we're not giving silent seconds to people. And, and so I'm going to get a little bit into the weeds, but I think it's important for government to hear this. There's two ways you can do affordable housing. You can do a subsidy recapture method, or you can do a subsidy retention method. This is new. This is a subsidy retention method. In the past, we have practiced subsidy recapture. So when there is that gap between what the market price is and what our families can afford, generally families were given a second. And the idea was, you could sell when you wanted to, and you could sell whatever the market would bear, and then the city would recapture those funds and put it into the next family. However, we never anticipated that the market in Sonoma County was going to get that hot. And so whatever money we recaptured as a second really wasn't enough to close that gap for the second family, which meant you had to put more money in. After you've done this once or twice, and I've worked with every city, we've all done it, you either are going to just keep the money and hope you can do something else with it, and let the house go, or you're going to put more money in. And that's not sustainable, pass maybe two times. In a cold market, the first thing that goes is your second because it's subordinate to the first. So during the recession, we had a bloodbath. We lost our seconds, and we lost our homes. At the land trust, it's subsidy retention. We don't give people money. Any kind of funding to close that gap is a front-loaded subsidy. We put the money on the front end, and the house is affordable to the paycheck. It's a 30-year fixed. That's it. So in a cold market, you know, our buyers sold, and they bought the houses at Bennett Valley because of market correction. And our teachers are still making the same paycheck. So we had a ton of resales during that time. And so because we are not connecting any part of the model to the market, it's self-sustaining, and you don't need additional subsidy. We have homes where one house is now serving the fourth family. And each family has left with more money than they had paid for, and it has been affordable each time without additional subsidy. The other thing is that the term of the affordability for the homes in the past has been zero, five years, 10 years, 35, 45, 55. This is 99 years renewable. This is perpetuity. It's forever. So those are the two key differences. And the stewardship, three.
Yeah, and I think that's great, because we did have some affordable homes way back that we didn't have a mechanism to really track those, and then those were lost.
Well, if I may make one more point. So one of the highest and best uses of the model, which we are really implementing more than ever, especially in the last six months, is that we work with specifically the city of Ronard Park, Hillsburg, and Petaluma, and Cloverdale, we've done this, where we take the existing housing stock. And when it comes up for resale, the city and the land trust work together to make that seller whole, and then to bifurcate the land and the house, and put that home into the land trust. And sometimes you don't need any additional subsidy to keep it affordable to the next income level, whatever your target is, and, and sometimes you need a little bit, but a little bit instead of new land entitlement, construction, labor, and we're able to turn the existing housing stock, take the investment that we've already made as the public, retain it in perpetuity, and turn that house into a permanent part of your portfolio that we steward for you. So I'm very happy about that.
Thank you, Dev.
All right, thank you very much for those questions. Councilmember Lamond?
Yeah, I, I think this is a really interesting presentation. You've kind of removed the land essentially from the fiscalization treadmill.
Yes.
Or hamster wheel.
That's right.
That we deal with, but at the same time, there's still some value provided for appreciation for these families too, so it's kind of.
Absolutely.
As best of mix of both worlds as you can do and still make it function. I wanted to ask, you touched on this briefly, part of the process, there's a determination that comes later down the line where we can figure out what sort of AMI we're looking to serve with these houses. How does that work?
Well, that depends on what your criteria is, what your policy is. My job is to implement your policy.
So it's just basically a slightly different value on the spreadsheet and initial investment, perhaps?
The difference is simply that the mechanism that we're going to use and the term of affordability is going to be slightly different. It's going to be in perpetuity, not 55 years, and it's going to be stewarded, and the subsidy is going to be front-loaded. And that is a challenge, but we've met it every single time. We've got about 12 million in assets with the land trust, and we have zero debt. We have no loans. Everything we have, we have absolutely front-loaded that subsidy, and.
Well, I wish I could say that at home, so good, so you're doing well. And it sounds like you've got every city in the county, other than Sebastopol, we'll have to get that through, so you have a full set.
We actually are in the inclusionary policy in Sebastopol, and we are working very closely over there as well.
Very good. Well, thank you for that. That was illuminating.
Thank you very much.
Vice Mayor Skilman?
I don't actually, oops, didn't even turn my speaker on. I don't actually have any questions. You guys covered everything that I made notes about, so thank you very much for the presentation and for being here this evening.
Yeah, thank you, Dev. I mean, I, I've had my questions that I had written down answered as well, so. And is staff done with presentation?
Yes, sorry, that's the end of the presentation.
Okay, then I'd like to go ahead and open this up for a public comment, if anybody has any comments to make or questions. Mr. Berich?
I've never listened to such craziness in all my life. I've been coming here for 20 years. This is crazy. I don't even know where to start with this concept that, that was just presented. It's, it's mind-blowing, some of the justifications and some of the, the strategies and policies and so forth that this program suggests. But I would like to say one thing. I think it's very refreshing to hear people come up before this council and this body and speak as eloquently as this woman did, and articulately, knows how to use a microphone, speaks with, with great timing. I found her presentation in that sense very refreshing, and I think the council, members on the council, could take a couple lessons from this woman.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone else like to speak on this issue? Seeing no one, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to council for recommendation, motion.
If I might, if there's further discussion, I just wanted to quickly thank M Group, Integra, and Mo Engineering for their contribution to making this project go forward. That should be mentioned. I think a letter of thanks from the city and the mayor and the council might be appropriate at that point. But with that, I'd like to move a resolution appropriating requested funding for engineering design and architectural work for the city's Jamie Lane subdivision.
Second.
And before you vote, I'll just add, I just wanted to add that, and Robin will probably kick me under the table, so also, the resolution authorizes me to sign agreements with these consultants, even though it's not explicitly in the recommendation, but it's in the resolution.
And I will add the worrisome caveat of adding that ability.
Thank you, and if, if you'll indulge me just for one moment, I also want to point out that I understand that the consultants will be signing the city's professional services agreement. There were a couple provisions in what was in your packet that gave me a little pause, and I was very happy to hear that they will be signing our agreements rather than what is in your packet, so feel even better about that.
Very good to hear. Thank you.
Great, so we have a motion and a second. Before we take a vote, I do have one more comment I'd like to make. You know, I think we, we know we have a housing crisis in the county. I mean, that's obvious. And to provide housing at different affordabilities, I think, is huge. It's almost paramount to the, the homeless issue. You know, if we had an empty lot and we could do, what I think the term is the small homes or the mini homes that, you know, and if we could do, you know, a large area of those, I think, you know, that would go a long way. This is kind of that next step up. These are people who are working full-time in our areas and can't afford housing. There's a lot of us that can barely afford, you know, what we have in this county. So I think this model is not only successful, you have a proven track record, but I think it's critical that cities can offer these kinds of opportunities to the public. So I commend everybody who's been involved with this issue. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any further comment? Mr. Councilmember Moore?
Yes, there is. I would concur, and I think it's a fantastic use of the Inclusionary Housing Funds, and concur with Councilmember Lamond on the, the gifts of the pro bono work put into that as well. And, and then I didn't know if it had a bearing on this, I don't think it officially does, but, but on page 176, 176 of the packet, it talks about, from the architect Frankie, exclusions, and it talks about additional service items not specified in the base scope of services, including additional, City of Petaluma requests for information for additional public hearings. So I thought maybe that might have been just a typo. And my understanding is they do a lot of work with Petaluma as well.
Yeah, we don't care if City Petaluma requests any information, because he won't be answering on our.
It's not bearing.
Contracts, no.
All right, thank you for pointing that out. Appreciate it. Any other comments before we vote? Yes, Councilmember Harvey?
Yeah, I'm glad to see this moving forward. This has been out there for a long time. I know we've been trying to move this forward, and I'm glad that we were able to find a partner to, to do this, and that although it's only five houses, it's at least making a five-house dent in our affordable housing stock, so appreciate that.
Yep, and the fact that it's right across from the train depot, you know, could be a, a perfect match. I'm going to look one last time on this end of the table. Any further comments? Nope? All right, fine. All in favor on the motion and second, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, please show that's a five oh vote. Thank you again very much. And we will move to item 11B, which is the draft five-year street capital improvement program summary. Mr. Scott.
Great. My name is Craig Scott, Public Works Director, City Engineer, and I'll, I'll be being assisted by Luella Gabriel, previously introduced by the mayor. She, she's the senior project engineer for Harrison Associates, leading the preparation of the five-years street CIP. So that, just for a little background, the city council in October of last year approved an agreement with Harrison Associates to design the 1920 street project, which would, would start as soon as July 1st for construction, and also prepare the five-year capital improvement program for streets. And what this does is it gives us a five-year look ahead at, at what, for a plan for improving our roadways, and instead of looking and deliberating on just one year at a time. And so we can, the, the idea is to revisit this plan every year with the annual budget process, and to, to fine-tune it. Things change. Each, each year, we might not get all of those streets that were intended to be built, constructed because of price increases. It could go the other way as well. But I have to warn you, the, the report that's attached to the staff report is technical, and a lot of the effort tonight is to make it understandable. and a lot of the effort tonight is to make it understandable. It is a complicated topic. I mean, we all have experience, obviously, with the roadways and it's a core city function is to is to maintain our roadways. But we have hundreds of segments and they each have or in different conditions of degradation and different levels of use of importance to the city. And so these are all, this lends itself to a model. So there is a model that's involved here called Street Saver, okay, aptly named. And so all of these segments are put into this model and these the criteria are evaluated based on this, what's called a decision tree and to take all these factors into account. And and it is iterative. So so we plug those, that criteria in, the model spits out a five-year plan and we looked at it. And so we've gone through several, many iterations of the of the model and will present what we've landed on tonight. There's the, every every two years, and this is something that staff has presented to council before, the city is mandated to do a pavement management program. And that is a way to just sort of provide this really general overall framework for what I'm talking about, but it doesn't take into account really practical measures when you actually go go ahead and look to build as do a street construction project in any given year. You know, we're talking about instead of having it scattered like the plan has, we tweak a few things to get them to be clustered and that improves the the constructability and economy of these projects. just before I I hand it over to Luella for the main meat of the presentation, as I mentioned, we have Harrison Associates on a contract to to design and they're in the midst of designing next year, the July 1st project. And so back in October, we looked at this project and it is in the L section and they're, it's based on the, well, the the pavement testing has been done, so we know what the treatment methods are and we have a pretty good idea on costs because it's pretty similar in a in the similar area to what we did and completed in 2018. And so that is year, we're calling it year zero because it's not part of the five-year. It's year zero and then we have years one through five, okay, starting with year 2020. Okay, I think with that, I'll hand it over to you, Luella, and for the for the presentation of the the report and and really describing how we landed on these these projects for the next five years.
Okay. Thanks, Craig. Good evening, mayor and council members and staff. Thank you for having me here. I wanted to go over their, this draft report and I know we're going to be going through a final report maybe in a month or so just to go over any changes or comments that you may have and how we can make those that change on the final. So the goal of this report was to utilize the 2017 pavement management program that was done by capital assets and using their information and also utilizing the Street Saver program that helps analyze all the the data and that they had put into the program as well and and then also updating the the decision criteria tree, I mean, decision tree criteria. And the decision tree actually is just a set of factors and criteria that we have shared with Craig and and based off of the previous projects that we felt were successful with the treatments that were used in the other portion of the L-street section. We introduced those into the decision tree and then added the actual costs that were that were bid at. And so we we have a good number of the unit costs to be able to estimate for these future projects. And then also, the scenario was also to raise the PCI by an additional five points. And PCI, just give you a little brief discussion on PCI. So PCI is, and it's going to be coming down in the next few slides as well, but maybe we'll just keep going on the next. So our approach for this report was to identify these high priority streets. And Craig and staff, they they evaluated which streets that they wanted to be put on this list first. And typically, these streets were in really bad shape. They had a very low PCI rating between probably zero to 24. And then and then it was also due to if it was a need that the the community needed these streets to be done and it was just of high importance to have these put into the five-year. And then we set initial budget and also based off of the PMP report, they suggested to, in order to increase the PCI by five points, we'd probably have to spend about a $1.2 million each year. Then we would revise and update the decision tree matrix, as I discussed earlier, with putting in the the newer treatments that we were successful in in the previous project and then input that those high priority streets and budgets into Street Saver. So Street Saver is a budgeting tool that was, I believe it was from MTC that created this program. And so a lot of cities and counties actually use this program. And so basically, it stores all the inspection data and then all the, it puts in all the PCIs. So it's basically, it's very subjective on on the the inspectors who are putting in the information into the program. And so we're able to manipulate all that information and then it, like Craig said, it'll spit out a a plan based off of the criteria that you want to show in your five-year plan. And then, let's see, number, number five, use the, once we we inputted the high priority streets in the program, we saw what the budget was available at the, with those streets. And it will also say, then based off of what the initial budgets that we were inputting, we saw what the gap was in between and then we filled in that gap with additional preventative maintenance streets, which which would mean more of the slurry seal and the crack seal type of treatments that will help maintain the street for a longer period of time. And then, but with all this information and data that is provided, we do a further step with trying to do, perform deflection testing and core samples so that we would get a more accurate treatment, what's needed for that street, because sometimes with Street Saver, it kind of generalizes what is needed, but it's still a budgeting tool. But with that, we just do further testing in order to get a better treatment that's selected for that street. So going back to the decision tree, it's basically, you're inputting information, it's very, I'm sorry, this is the technical part, but it it reads all the the functional class of the street, the surface type, which is either your asphalt over asphalt or asphalt over concrete, and then the condition category. And so and that's where it's, if you look at maybe the next slide over, this is what the PCI condition means. So the PCI is a pavement condition index and it it ranges from zero to 100. And basically, from a scale of zero to 24, the street is in a very poor condition and then all the way up to a 90 to 100 is in is in excellent condition. So right now, we are at a average, a network system average at 55, or 55, 56. And what our report wants to do is to increase that to by a minimum of five points so that our roadways would be at a at a better condition. So but after, even after this five-year plan, it's still more work to do in order to get to where most of your streets will be in the 70 to 89 PCI index. So once you get into that range, that pocket, then all you have to do mainly is do more preventative maintenance work and you'll, you won't have to do as much of the heavy rehab, rehabilitation type of projects that cost more money. Okay. So this is also, this is a sample of the decision tree and we, I only showed the, one of the functional classes, which is the arterial. And we put in these these treatments and with the city's comment, we were for, maybe I should explain each one. So if you look at, say, the first line, the very, one, very good, under the condition category, for the crack seal and the surface and the restoration, we wanted to do, you know, seal cracks and slurry seals. The next column over just shows how much that would cost per linear foot or for, cost per square yard. And the columns to the right also explain how many years in between you would have to do a new surface seal or crack seal. And then, so that's basically, you're putting in the criteria in this decision tree. So, okay, we could go to the next slide. So once you have set up your decision tree, then you're able to create what Street Saver calls a scenario. And so this is where you input all your high priority streets and then you input your budget of, say, the 1.2 million and then and then whatever is left over in between, then you could fill in the gap with additional streets and Street Saver will find those streets for you and place them in within the five-year program. And then, let's see, so this is an example of a scenario work plan. And so this is for year 2022. It basically gives you what the properties of the street from where it begins to where it ends, gives you the length with an area and and then it gives you, under treatments, the current PCI, PCI before and PCI after. So those columns basically say the current PCI is what it is today. And so, say, for instance, Macklin Drive is at a PCI of 49. And when this year 2022 starts, the PCI would have depreciated down already to 42. So but once we do this project, which requires the treatment of, we are showing an edge grind, digouts and overlay, it'll, of course, get your PCI up to 100, 100. So so we we have the costs in there as well and and of course, that cost was was coming from the decision tree matrix that shows it, what it costs per unit, the unit cost for for that type of treatment. And then, so it it does go through all the edge grind overlay streets and then it jumps to the next type of treatment, which is the FDR. FDR is is a full-depth reclamation type of treatment where it's more heavy duty, but it's usually less expensive than a total reconstruction of the street. Full depth, it also, it saves on a lot of hauling costs from, since you're grinding up the existing, existing top layer of the asphalt, then also grabs some of the subgrade as well. It pulverizes it and then you're able to put in additional additives like cement and and cement and lime. And so then it, you're basically using the same, recycling the same subgrade that's there. So that's one of a green alternative. So we could go to the next slide? Okay, then what else, what also Street Saver does, it will create these exhibits of maps of, so this is for year 2020. These were the high priority streets that the city selected to be done for that year and that they're color coordinated by the type of treatment that's needed for for that area. And so it, we we created these maps for year 2020 to year 2024. Craig, did you want to go over the list of streets or?
I think going over them at a glance is good. We can always revisit them.
Okay. Okay. So then, so the next few slides are just for the different years of the high priority streets that were listed. And then, so what the program will also do is it will select the preventative maintenance streets for, again, slurry seals and crack seals. And and that's what will keep the, preserve these rehab streets even longer. So so FDR, for instance, has a a life of 15 to 20 years. So if you continually do slurries or crack seals, when the time is ready for to do that type of treatment, it will just preserve it even longer than that. So that, and that's what our goal is to, at least right now for this report, is to increase the PCI by five points. But ultimately, we would like to increase, and once we get all of these high priority streets that have or need the more major rehabilitation type of treatments needed, those are the ones with the PCIs from zero to 24 or from the next level above that, 24 to 49, I believe. Those are the ones we want to target early, but at the same time, it's going to cost more, so we try to have to spread that out and at the same time, introduce more of the preventative maintenance treatments so that you continually are still preserving other streets that have been done previously.
Maybe I can interject here. I think I want to, it's necessary to give you a roadmap to the report and interpreting it. The real meat of this report will be in these five figures, one figure for each year. And those figures correspond to the tables one, one and three, which are on page 197 in your packet. That's page one, which has the repairs to the streets that are in the worst condition. Those are the high priority streets. Then table three are the preventative maintenance, the low-cost treatments that go into those same years. So those years, each each year has been separated into two pieces, that the remediation piece and the preventative maintenance piece over the, over pages 197, 198, and 199. And those are the the tables that are also up on the wall there for the public. And so in in the discussion, you're welcome to go back and and refer to these figures and these tables because these, this is the the result, the output of of all this iterative and the modeling and everything that we've done. And and I think Luella's touched on it. It was revealing, at least to me, that we are in a stage right now where we have streets that are, you know, our PCI is pretty, it's it's moving in the right direction, but there's enough streets that are in the low end of the range that we have to spend considerable budget on remediating them, doing this expensive treatment. But this plan gets us to a point, I think the the projection is roughly 10 years at this level, where we would just do preventative maintenance, pennies on the dollar to maintain our streets. And so I asked, is there a city out there that's ever obtained this? And I think Double End came up. You know, it is possible and and there are cities that that get to that stage because then what happens is you spend Because then what happens is you spend far less money annually on maintaining your streets. But we have to go through this pain to, to get to that point. And this plan does get us there. Will be, will we be able to spend at this level each of the next five years? That, that's yet to be seen. But at least we've got a roadmap, a plan that, that we can then try to follow. Did you want to go ahead and?
I guess if you flip through the rest of.
Okay, so, so, okay, so, so the first year, basically, we're looking at very high visibility, very high use streets. This is the hub. We're looking at fixing to be brand-new streets. And then West Sierra Avenue. That's year one, and that's got a higher price tag than the 1.2. And then, this is at a different scale, so it looks like it's less, less of a project. But it's, 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 it is, well, it is less of a project, but not as much as that scale would look. But this is West School Street and also a piece of Hellman up there. Is that correct?
Right.
And then, the third year, we have Old Redwood Highway and Myrtle in there mainly. And then the final year there, 2024, we've got Redwood Drive and Cypress. Okay.
Yeah, 2024, they were, it was over on Redwood Highway as well again. And, and again, these are mainly the, the more expensive treatments that need to be done for these high priority streets that were selected. All the green are, are the, the slurry seals that, what we could do also is just to cut down on costs. We'll try to cluster them so that they're closer to the high priority streets that need to be done. So it's, it'll cut down on the mobilization costs. But even with that dark green area that's, that was the project that was completed in 2018, and it's already at 2024, it's asking to do a, a crack seal. And that's, again, to preserve that street longer than the, the life of that rehab treatment of fifteen to twenty years. So it'll extend beyond that. So this is just the cost summary of all the treatments with the PCI goals achieved. So for 2020, because there was more streets on the high priority list that was requested, that one has a 2.1 million price tag. And, and let me explain this PCI never treated and the PCI with selected treatment. So the PCI never treated at a fifty-three, that's when, at 2020, that's what the PCI value is. But what the program doesn't show is that in 2019, when we do this next project over in the L section and the Old Redwood Highway repair, that after that project is completed, we'll insert that information into Streetsaver. And that actually bumps up that PCI at 2020 to a fifty-nine. So, and that's, you'll see that in the, in the appendix as well. I'm not quite sure what page that is.
On page 217 of the packet. It inserts year 2019 in that table, which makes it easier to connect the dots. Because year 2019, never treated is fifty-five. And then with selected treatment, with this year's project will be, get it up to fifty-nine. And it goes from fifty-nine to sixty-two to sixty-four, sixty-six, sixty-seven and seventy.
Right. So then, within this five-year period, we have achieved increasing the PCI by more than five points. So in 2024, the PCI, the new PCI would be at seventy. And so seventy is at a very good, we, we'd like to be at the seventy range in the future, just to make sure we're preserving the streets and spending less money on the, the heavier rehab type of projects. So then, let's see. So with the, the totals for the high priority, and I also included curb ramps in here too, because with certain types of treatments, it does trigger to improve the curb ramps just to be ADA compliant. And then, so that cost would be about 5.4 million. And then with the preventative maintenance costs, it's an additional 7.26, I mean, seven, 726,000. And so, total project-wise for the five years at 6.1. So, in conclusion, I just wanted to show with a photo of what was constructed in the L Street section in October 2018. So with Larch Avenue, just a sample of how the street looked before with the heavy alligator cracking, and it also had depressions in the street, a lot of block cracking. So that, that street required an FDR treatment. So I, I think, I believe the residents were fairly happy with the final product. And the, the construction seemed to go pretty well for that, for that time period in the summer of, from July to October. So with that, I, I just hope that with the five-year, all the streets in Kattati will be in that high PCI range of the seventies.
That concludes the presentation. We're really looking for direction to staff on the draft report to help us finalize the report. And then, this is a timely presentation because it'll inform the budget discussion at tomorrow's workshop.
Great. All right, thank you both. Appreciate that. You know, it's very interesting to see how much money it costs to maintain roads. It's phenomenal, but it's, it's a necessity anymore. I will say, you know, that the Streetsaver program doesn't take into account a few things. One is politics, because I can guarantee you, if Old Redwood Highway was not on this year's thing to do some kind of work with, there would be an incredible uproar from here, let alone from out in the crowd. And so it's nice to see that on, on the list for, for a bit of a fix. That was, you know, that was just an unfortunate circumstance. And, and I think, I think weather has to play a huge factor. I mean, we had, we have two roads in the park closed due to all the weather that we had from, one was a sinkhole and one was a slide that took out a whole lane. So we're going to hope we don't see, you know, that kind of winters. But we don't know. We don't know, right? So, so there are a few of those factors, I think, that we also have to just keep in the back of our minds, and you just never know. Do we have any questions for staff? Councilmember Harvey?
So, some of the streets that are listed on here currently do not have curbs and gutters. When we go in and do those, are those added or not? But what's?
No.
No?
No, it's, it's strictly street preservation. So it's replicating what's out there now, with the exception of upgrading the, the ramps, if there are ramps. But it's not.
So only if there are already sidewalks and curbs there, where a ramp is there, the ramp gets upgraded? If there isn't any, then it stays like it is?
When it, so on, I'll just pick, you know, this first one, 2020. Arthur Street, for example, is on there. And there's nothing on Arthur Street, but I wouldn't even call them, you know, ditches. But, so that will stay like that. It'll just get repaid. Is that correct?
Yes, yes. The emphasis here is to, is to improve the driving surface.
Okay, all right. Thank you. That helps.
And it would, you know, behoove us to discuss this at strategic planning. And, you know, are there other fund sources out there for doing these other tasks? Because I know I've brought that up in the past too. It's like, okay, well, we're putting all this money into the streets, that's great. But, you know, we have some areas where, where there are sidewalks that are problematic, you know, being lifted and so on. So, thank you for bringing that up. Councilmember Moore, any questions?
I did. You talked about the Streetsaver program having some areas that might not have been addressed. Does that particular program consider the volume of traffic on that particular street or just the condition of the street?
It's, it's based off of the, the.
As an example, you're not going to have a ton of traffic on Arthur Street.
Right. It does take in consideration the type of street, if it's an arterial collector or residential street. So in that way, they'll, they'll know what traffic loads are associated with those types of, the, the, the street functions.
Thank you. Councilmember Landman, I almost said Moore, but I just walked away. That's why I was looking at him. Sorry.
I could be answering either way.
Either way, yeah.
Just one quick question. So we discussed the first five years here, and the goal potentially is looking at ten years of getting to a point where we're at essentially preventive maintenance. And I guess, one thing I wanted to ask, two things. That second five years, is that essentially the same rough level of investment we're looking at? I'm not sure if I picked up what we're looking at to do that. Would that would just be continuing this five-year plan one more time? That ten years to get to that point where all of a sudden we're in this somewhat unprecedented place of actually just being the kings of slurry seal and not very much more?
That would be the goal. But yeah, we, it seems like we would be able to continue the same as long as the budgets are available during those years. And it could be where the, the next five-year plan may have a higher budget. So it, it just depends on what's going to be available for each.
Oh, don't disappoint me with a higher budget in five years. What I wanted to ask actually kind of relates to that. So if we were to get to that point, if we were actually able to, with a little luck in the economy and get to that point and do that, which would be really a great investment for the community. And that would be just unprecedented almost type of endeavor at this point. What sort of savings roughly, do we have an idea what that saves a community of this size? Excuse me, over, on an annual basis? When you're just doing essentially slurry seal maintenance as opposed to the ongoing repair that we've been looking at? Sounds like it would be a pretty high level. Is there any way to put even a rough number on that?
Well, even if you just look at the unit cost that you need to do slurries is, my decision tree, it's like six, six fifty a square yard versus if you were to do, right now, the cost for FDR or the overlay, FDR is at sixty-eight dollars a square yard. Overlay is at forty-four. So you could see from the cost savings of that, that slurry seal and, and crack seals is a lot cheaper to maintain the streets as long as they're at a good condition where they don't have to do additional rehabilitation methods.
Perfect. Couldn't ask for a better lesson in the necessity to avoid deferred maintenance. So thank you.
All right, thank you very much. And Vice Mayor Skellman?
No questions, just commenting that I like this idea of taking the long view as far as looking forward, as far as we can. And I also think it's great to be able to try to project even as far as ten years. And so thank you very much for doing all the work and coming here and doing the presentation tonight.
All right, thank you. Yeah, it seems, you know, clearly that it's, obviously it's a cyclical nature in dealing with things like, well, even sidewalks that we brought up separate from this topic. But certainly, street paving is definitely cyclical. And you guys know best, but, you know, whatever that right cycle is to go in. And if we have the flexibility in this program, if we see something occurring, if we see some alligator cracks starting to form and we can go out, and let's say it wasn't quite the year to address that particular street. But if we could go out and know that if we can just put a Band-Aid on that broken aorta for a few more years, you know, it'll get us that much more longevity out of a road. But it's, it's a huge task to undertake, so. But thanks for the, again, for the presentation. So I'd like to go ahead and open this up for a public comment net at this point. Mr. Beric?
The whole town seems to be a Band-Aid mayor. That was a good point. You know, we've spent millions of dollars on a downtown specific plan that has failed. We have spent some 22 million dollars on a police department, a new grandiose police department, which includes interest. Downtown specific plan, including the remodel of the community room and the police station, 28 million dollars over thirty years. There's your road money. Decision trees, more outside consultants, budgeting tools. This is why so many people in our community resent government the way they do. They weren't reflected in your recent satisfaction survey. This is not rocket science. I have full faith in Mr. Scott, Mr. Obid, to do what this consulting agency is trying to do for us. The citizens have no say in the process, which used to be the case when we held meetings regarding our city budget and street repair, where people could come forward and put in their input. This kind of takes people, the public, out of the element to some degree. We have already graded our streets, A through F. So now we have a consulting firm to do it again for us. So this is wasteful duplication of services again. And it's hard for me to believe that you cannot buy this planning tool online somewhere for a reasonable cost, like other cities do. But instead, you pass the buck. You spend valuable resources on a consulting firm to come in here and do Mr. Scott's job for him. It's very frustrating. Our streets are deteriorating faster than we can afford to fix them. It's old news. It's been going on for years, years. No one here should be surprised. Mrs., Mrs. Harvey knows that these, these streets without curbs and gutters and sidewalks are, we will never have the money at the rate that you're spending and wasting money to put those curbs and sidewalks in where they don't exist. It's, I mean, you guys need to get real and be honest with the taxpayers and the community, that you have screwed the community with this type of buffoonery in farming out all this, all this consulting. And when we have staff here who are fully qualified to do it and have the tools available for them online to buy these programs, and we just roll up our sleeves, we get in here a couple of nights, and we do our street projects on our own without all these fancy-dancy, high-paid consulting firms. We just, what, another fifty or sixty thousand dollars, whatever it was, for these services.
Thank you very much for your comments, Ms. Alderman.
I don't think the consultant considered the damages from the water and the flooding. West School Hill, it has a lot of damage for this, this winter. And it already had a zero score. Clifford had zero. And West Kattati was in the poor in the, the two bottom ones. Those are the two main arteries into our neighborhood, the west of the freeway. And that's where people have two-million-dollar homes that are paying the, those high pri. We have no parks, we have no services, we don't have curbs. And now we have no streets, and it'll be two years until you fix West School Hill. That's falling apart. When are we, in the west side, going to get any kind of services back? Your first priority is the high-visibility downtown hub, not the people in the neighborhood that pay the money, their high property taxes. You got, and it's our main roadway. Down Clifford and, heaven forbid, we want to put a bus route out there because the, the buses would probably get flat tires by the time you guys did. You, you guys have passed the buck on the streets. Two years ago, you spent less than 50,000 dollars. And I think it was study money on the roads. And here you're talking a million? It's not going to happen. You're going to budget it, and you're not going to spend the money. You're going to farm it out to everything else. But when it comes down to the streets, it's not going to be there. Maple Avenue in front of my house is fine because you had a grant. You don't, you ignore the west side on everything. And I'm really tired of it. You ignore the west side on everything, and I'm really tired of it. Your priorities are screwed up. Some of those are '70s, '80s. Why are our zero streets two years out? It makes no sense. And ones that were damaged by the storm. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Seeing no one else, I'm going to go ahead and close the public comment period. This is a curveball question, so you may not have an answer for it. If you had to estimate, it was just a question that came up in my head now, say, in the last three years, how much money has been spent on street work? Is there any kind of a figure? Ballpark-ish?
We spent $1.3 million last year, and we spent... The Old Redwood Highway was something like $250,000 for that, instead of millions of dollars because we did a thin overlay.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. So, again, spending money, regardless of the fund source, so, you know, last year alone was around $1.3 million.
$1.3, and then about another, it was $700,000 or $800,000 through downtown, and then another couple hundred thousand on the northern gateway area.
Right. So...
What about last year?
Yeah, that's $1.3 million.
That was $1.3.
So, it's approaching $2.5 million or so, I think.
Right. So, you know, there's maybe more of a recent history of taking care of the streets and putting work into them. And it's not a perfect system, that we're not going to hit all the streets that people want, clearly, but they're on the list, they're going to be addressed. It's not this year, next year, the year after. So, I think this is the systematic approach that you need to take for something like this. And then sometimes you have to, like you've said, in the Streetsaver program, you have to group some areas for efficiency's sake. If you have a contractor who's going to do two blocks in this neighborhood, two streets in that neighborhood, three more over here, they're going to charge a significantly larger sum of money to do that work for mobilizing and demobilizing. So, that makes a lot of sense from that perspective as well. Are there any more comments or questions from council? Councilmember Harvey? I keep starting with you. I'm going to... Next time, I'm looking that way.
You can.
But go ahead.
No, I appreciate the report. There was a lot of detailed information. It took me, like, a long time to get through this and absorb it and understand it. In particular, I really appreciate, at the very end, it really lists all the streets in all of Cotati, and it does a couple of things. It kind of lists where they're at, what their segments are, what their PCI index is at, when they kind of have had their last thing done to them, when they're scheduled. I think that that's a good thing, a good tool for us to have, so that when someone asks, because oftentimes, we do get asked by people, "Well, when's my street coming up?" This is kind of a nice place to kind of say, "Well, here's what your index is at, and here's kind of where in the plan we have you." Now, over time, that may change, you know, because things happen, storms, different things happen. But I think that that is really beneficial for us as a council to have, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any more comments or questions, District, Councilmember Landman?
Yeah, I just think this is really actually pretty exciting. You know, what used to be kind of a black art, figuring how to invest money in roads, and roads would just kind of eat that money no matter what you did. And now, it's actually become more of a science. And I think there's a real value in investing in the science and bringing in people that understand that, to put us in a position where we have both an ongoing plan, it gives us a rough budget to work with, a decision tree of looking at the various values, and a rough accounting, as Councilmember Harvey said, of what roads we're going to be able to hit one. Because that is a question we hear, and people do want to know. And to be in a position that not many cities are able to do, to actually have a rough outline of, "Here's where we plan to go," it's a good thing. You know, I find it exciting, perhaps the public doesn't find it as exciting, but, you know, still, I think if we, as a council and a city, can stay focused on this for five and ideally, 10 years, if whoever's here at that point can do that, we'll have such a significant benefit for the public, as well as the people that come behind all of us. We'll put them in such a good position. That would be a very quiet thing, but still, maybe not a moon race or a moon landing, but pretty darn exciting for a small city. So, I'm really glad to see the work that went into this, and that's the direction I'd give as a full thumbs up for this.
Yes, sure. Did you have any comments or questions?
No, I mean, just, I think it's just great now, laying it all out for us to be able to see comprehensively. So, I don't really have any specific do this, don't do that. It looks like the way it's put together, and it makes sense, and it looks like a really viable plan. So, I appreciate all of the work that went into it and give it an additional thumbs up. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Harvey?
I just want to follow on to what Councilmember Landman said. I think it's, we do live in a situation where times aren't always good. We have good times and we have bad times. Some of us that are here have suffered through some of the horrible times. So, I think it's nice to have a plan and that we can keep chugging along at that plan and hope that things stay good so that we can keep along with that. But at some point, I know that, you know, we will have another down cycle, if you will. And so, if we can get ourselves as prepared as we can and get as far along as we can on this, I think we will have served our community well.
All right. Very good. Yes, I have no additional comments after comments that have already been made, so I won't repeat those. So, do we have any kind of a recommendation from council?
Just receiving the correct direction.
Oh, yeah. So, that's true. Sorry. All right. So, you've got your clear direction. Thank you again for the presentation. And it is 8:36, and we're going to take about a seven-minute break. For regional commissions and committees, and there's several of them. So, I will turn that over to our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So... I'm with you now. So, as you will recall, for some reason, this one page is like reverse inserted in the document. Back in January, the mayors and council members and City Selection Committee made several appointments for expired or soon-to-be-expired positions. And during that meeting, it was decided that the nomination period would be extended until March 1st for a couple of the appointments. The ABAG Regional Planning Commission appointment from the City Selection Committee, as well as the MTC Board Appointment by the Mayors and Council Members Group. Of course, March 1st has passed, and so there's some applications in the packet for the ABAG Regional Planning Committee Appointment. There's also a couple applications in for MTC, the incumbent, as well as a member of the public. For the ABAG, it's the incumbent and a Ronard Park council member that's in the packet. In the intervening time, there's also been some other, some other appointments that have come due for reappointment, and a new one that came along the horizon. The new one is the Legislative Task Force for MTC. MTC is forming a legislative task force to follow legislation related to CASA. And so, they're asking for two nominees from the cities. And then, in addition to that, the sort of upcoming, just recurring ones are the Airport Land Use Commission position and the LAFCO alternate position. And all of those are in the packets. And I guess I'll just leave it at that unless anybody has any questions on the pending appointments.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there any questions for staff on this pretty straightforward staff report? No? All right. Seeing none. We can open the public comment now? Or not? Okay. I'm seeing a lot of no's going on, so we'll let that go, and we will not open public comment. So, time for a discussion. Up here, we have several appointments that are relatively straightforward, where one person has applied for one position. We certainly have at least two positions with two people who have applied. And I'd like to also have a discussion on the MTCA Bag Task Force and kind of get a clearer understanding. We only have, I've only saw in the packet, there was just one representative, Mayor Ronard Park, had applied for that, but I know there's more positions. So, I find that really odd that others haven't applied. But anyway, we won't, there's no need to address that. So, if anybody would like to start, I'm seeing everybody looking down except for Councilmember Landman. We can, well, yeah, we can go just one at a time right through here, so... So, the first is the ABAG Regional Plan Committee, where we need to appoint, or at least recommend, one position. We have two appointees, Julie Combs, City of Santa Rosa, and Susan Adams, City of Ronard Park. Councilmember Landman, you have a microphone on.
Well, I had it on earlier, but I made the mistake of looking that way. I'd be happy to kick it off. Yeah, this is, I don't know, this is the place where I'd start, but this is one of the places I wanted to light on tonight. And this, normally, in a case like this, where we have a colleague we've known for years on a position, which they've served for a long time, and somebody new wants it, I'd probably tend to give it to the colleague that's been doing it for a while, rather than change. But given the concerns about CASA that I have yet to hear, and what I had truly hoped to hear before tonight, was Ms. Combs say that regardless of any personal feeling she might have in the matter, whatever her personal convictions are, that she would reflect the consensus view of this county in representing our interests to MTC and ABAG RPC. And having not heard that, what strikes me in Susan Adams's letter is that was the first place she went. That's what she sees as the problem, and that's the promise she made. And that kind of sealed the deal for me. I've waited till right up to this afternoon. I even watched the meeting up in, or some of the meeting up in Santa Rosa, just to see if that would come out in discussion, and it did not. So, that's where my vote would go. And I think, given our concerns, I mean, I'd like to talk about it a little more when we get around to MTC, because that's really the focus of this. It's the logical place for us to be. We have concerns about two things. One, some of the process behind CASA, as well as some of the proposed implementation that's come out in the various elements that are now being put to the legislature. We have strong concerns, and we're not alone in that. Many cities share that. But ideally, we also, and just as equally, share a concern about the concept of what being our representative means. And there seems to be some different views, schools of thought. I think some people feel that once they're appointed to a position, and they then have full rein to do whatever, regardless of how that's taken back in their community. And where others feels that, while you put the hat on of the committee that you're sitting on, the board that you're sitting on, nevertheless, for important issues, you're there truly as a representative. It means you're representing the people that sent you there. And that, to me, is the most important thing. I can't appoint anybody that's not going to be willing to represent us. I don't mind if they want to state publicly they disagree with the consensus view. I would respect that. I would respect somebody that chose to step down from the position because they couldn't support that consensus view as well. But personally, I'm just not of the feeling that it's good for our community to support people in these important positions could create significant change, potentially, in our community, as we see. That there seems to be some unwillingness to check back in and then take even some form of limited direction from us as a group. So, that's a long-winded say of, I think I'd prefer to support myself, Susan Adams, tonight, and that's where my vote would go on that one.
Yeah, and I seem to remember at the last mayor's meeting that Councilmember Combs did sort of address this issue. And I don't know if you missed that or not, but I'm remembering that she actually did address that issue in the council chambers up there. And where were we? Healdsburg, was it? Yeah, Healdsburg, Windsor? Wherever we were. Yeah.
Healdsburg. I remember she, excuse me, she shared some possible, you know, concerns from both sides, perhaps something was missed here, something was missed in that place, and some good sound, some willingness to be flexible. She has not been as flat-out clear as Mr. McKenzie about where her position is. But at the same time, I have not hear that queer, clear and unequivocal, "I'll support your views." And I have grave concerns, that she would personally. That's...
Yeah.
I mean, if I would, if I heard the opposite, I would be then happy to, but I have not. We shouldn't be in a position really to even have to worry about that, unfortunately, but we are.
Right. All right. Thank you. Vice Mayor Skilman?
Thank you. And Ms. Adams did reach out to me. She's on the Library Committee, as I was just trying to come up with the acronym.
Advisory Board?
Yes, the LAB with me. So, I mean, she does seem very enthusiastic and interested in taking on new tasks, and but I'm very comfortable supporting Julie Combs, actually, in part because of her conversation at the last meeting as well, trying to address concerns. So, and especially because she's vice chair this year, so it seems like there's a lot of support as far as her ability to take on the responsibilities.
So, you're on the fence?
No.
I heard you say that you could support either one. Is there...
No, no, I said that's why I'm supporting Julie.
Julie. Got it. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no, no, that's okay.
Check mark. I'm just keeping tabs here. Councilmember Moore?
I did get a call from Ms. Adams seeking support. My only concern with Ms. Adams is the antithesis of the approach that Ms. Combs took and going forward, that it seems as if she has lumped onto that particular avenue to take on this position. I think that Julie has had quite a bit of experience, so I'm not certain at this time that it's good to have a new body in there right then with all the things going on. I'm hoping maybe Ms. Combs has learned her lesson from previous experience. So, my inclination is to have Ms. Combs on there at this point, but I'm not, it's not a total unequivocal support on that. So, kind of on offense, but more so toward, more so toward the experience on there.
Yeah, I already put a check mark down, so I already voted.
So, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, it doesn't matter. No, of course not. All right. Thank you. Councilmember Harvey? Don't roll your eyes.
Jeez. I also was approached by Susan Adams from Ronard Park. One thing that I do think that is good for us is to see members of Ronard Park engaged again for a very long time. I think a lot of them kind of had delegated to staff, and now, all regional things, they weren't as involved. So, personally, I am really glad that they're all starting to get engaged again. So, I want to encourage them to stay engaged. I feel a little bit differently than Mark about, you know, expressing my views. That's not where I kind of lost it with all of this, not necessarily my views. I feel like there was something huge going on that impacted all of us terribly, and there were no red flags, or, "Hey, this is coming," or, "Hey, you need to know about this," or, "Hey, what do you think about this?" It was just silence until after the fact. I went today to Santa Rosa's meeting. I was, I guess, a little bit surprised since Julie claims to be so involved in all of this. She barely said anything on it. The lady from MTC did all of the talking, and she, you know, for being so involved and being part of it, I would have thought that she would have, again, provided more information and feedback. Some of the questions that both people in... Some of the questions that both people in the audience and councilmembers asked about, well, kind of, well, what about this data, or how did we get there, or what was discussed here? You know, even the lady that presented said, well, I wasn't in all the meetings, I don't really have that information. She didn't add any of that. And I would, I was hoping, you know, that she would add that. And you talked about Mr. McKenzie, he even, you know, he got up and spoke about, you know, his, his take on all of it. So that, that concerned me a lot, that, you know, here she appears to want to be part of this and want our support, but I didn't even feel, even with her own council, when they were discussing the topic, even as their representative there, that she was very sharing of kind of what went on. And, and that, that concerns me a lot. So I don't expect someone necessarily to agree with my views. We all have different views. But if there are things that are going to impact our community and someone is on a regional board, I do expect them to notify us so that we can react to them prior to something being signed in writing, that it's a done deal. That, that's, I think, what was so disturbing with all of this, was that signatures were made and the statement was made today, which was also a little disturbing to me. And that was, well, signing this, it didn't mean that it was endorsing it. Well, that confused me even more. Well, what does that mean? If you signed it, that you are signing on to it and it doesn't mean you endorse it or agree with it, what does it mean? So that only tended to confuse me even more because I didn't even understand at that point, what does it mean to sign if you don't agree necessarily and you don't endorse it? But anyways, so I think I, I hear what you're saying about having experience on there, but I, I feel like this is going to be a continuing theme. And I do think that we need someone that is going to look out for Sonoma County and let us know when something is happening. Let us know when there's legislation that we need to be paying attention to and, you know, kind of rallying around and stuff like that. So I would tend to lean towards Susan.
That's okay. No, that's all right. Yeah, and as far as my take, Susan Adams did contact me, and I've known her for some time. I think she's like 13, 14 years she was on the Ronard Park Planning Commission, which of course, when I look at parts of Ronard Park, that makes me also, I'll pass, I'll pass on that next statement, I won't even finish it, but.
They're building houses.
They are definitely doing that. But, you know, that tells me that there's experience and knowledge and some good background. And, you know, regardless of what you may think of how that area's been planned, I mean, there's been communications. And, and I think that's really the, the key issue that we've been bringing up with this particular point. So, and it's not to say that, you know, Julie, again, has done a fine job. I don't think, you know, she could still do a fine job. So it, it's one of those areas where, you know, probably both, but I, you know, both could do it well. But, you know, maybe it's time that, you know, there's a change. We certainly don't know, there's eight other cities that are going to be voting on this. We have no idea how they're going to vote on this. But it's looking like the Cotati recommendation for A-Bag Regional Planning Committee will be Susan Adams because we have a, we're leaning three to two right now. If people care to change their numbers either direction, you can feel free to do so. And you can actually ponder that because when we're done, I'll come back to this and the other position, not for a long discussion, but just to do one more check-in where we have two candidates for one position.
Because I believe we were actually at a three and a half to one and a half here, and that's, that's going to be a problematic final vote. I don't know how you're going to split that vote, so.
Right, so we can, we can revisit, but at this point in time, it's, it is what it is. And we'll come back to it. All right. The North Bay Division League California Cities Executive Board Member, Rachel Hunley from the City of Sonoma is, is the only applicant. Any issues whatsoever?
Will support.
Boy, that was really easy. Okay. And here we go right back to the next position when there's two people applying for, for one, and that is the MTC Metropolitan Transportation Committee, where we have Jake McKenzie from the City of Ronard Park and Mr. Stephen, who, I'm forgetting his last name, Brittle Bowe?
Brittle Bowe.
Brittle Bowe. Yeah, sorry, Bowe Bowe. Yeah, that's, sorry. And he was at the, that meeting in the council chambers, again, up in that city, wherever we were, Healdsburg. Why do I keep forgetting? Why can't I not think of Healdsburg? I don't know what's going on. And, and he actually got up and spoke to the mayors and the audience at that meeting to say, here's who I am and, you know, I have these qualifications. He has a lot of planning background, there is no doubt to that. I mean, you can see it in the letter that he wrote. And I also feel, I will say, this is probably more strongly said than I said for Julie, I think, in Jake's case. He has done a lot for, you know, transportation issues countywide, bicycle issues, the train, paths along the train path. And I hear loud and clear and have actually, I have spoken to Jake, but not to Mr. Brittle Bowe. But, and I've told him my opinion on where I think he took a huge misstep. And who knows that it could cost him, you know, this seat? And, and I told him that. But, but inside, I'm thinking that I would actually, this is just really stepping out, that I would be fine in voting for him. But there's four other votes that are going to come from councils, so I'm going to go to the other end from the last time I was there with Councilmember Moore.
I would like to defer to Councilmember Lee.
I know you will, but we're going to hear from him last.
I can chime in too.
Yeah.
I would be inclined to support Jake on the MTC. I think he has brought a lot to it. I don't know Mr. Brittle Bowe. And granted, he does have some land use experience, but I don't know if he would be as strong an advocate. So.
All right.
My inclination would probably be Jake just for the MTC.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know that he can do any more damage there.
Well, yeah, that's a rhetorical question. We'll just let go. Councilmember Harvey.
I too want to hear what Mark has to say.
Okay. I will go to the.
Well, I know, yeah. Well, I, I think that you've been a little bit more involved in this, you've been involved in the transportation stuff, so you've seen a lot more, you know, you keep me over on water and garbage. I'm a little bit removed over, over here. But I, the problem that I'm having is, and I didn't get a chance to talk to Jake, he called me, but I, but I didn't, I didn't get a chance to call him back again from the first time go around with this. My concern that I have is I, I don't think that he still gets that there was anything wrong with what happened with any of this. I mean, even his comments today at the Santa Rosa Council Meeting, you know, it's just like, well, you know, they told me I needed to sign it and I signed it and it doesn't mean that I endorsed it and, you know. And, you know, then he went on and on about he would have, I guess, given a report at SCTA but was taken off SCTA, something like that, that he disagreed with the report that was put out, in his words, by one person on the true impacts to Ronard Park. I didn't know what that was all about because, again, kind of like here, you only get a few minutes, so he didn't really get to elaborate on that. I just, I'm not feeling that he wants to represent us. I feel like he is a good representative. I feel like I agree with you that he's brought money here, but I feel like it's not representing Sonoma County. I don't know how else to, to kind of say that. So that, that's why I'm, you know, I'm really, you know, stuck with that. It is, I want him to, to, I guess I would have felt better if he'd have said, you know what, yeah, I, I should have gotten you guys, you know, a heads up on this, let you know that these were the things that were coming out. I agree with some of them, I don't agree with others of them, and, you know, but this is coming and you guys need to be aware of it. I, I would have felt better about that. But to kind of sign it in the middle of Christmas time and then it's a done deal and now, oh, well, endorsement doesn't mean we agree and, you know, well, after the fact, I, I'm just having, I'm struggling with that. And that's kind of where I'm at. So I will wait to hear, but that's kind of what I'm struggling with.
And we'll be here until you decide.
All right.
Vice Mayor Skilman.
So knowing next to nothing about Mr. Brittle Bowe, I did a little research on him. And the, the challenge is he's, he's not an elected. The only three people who are on the MTC board who are not elected are non-voting members. So there are no voting members on the MTC board who are not elected officials in one capacity or another. So that was one of my concerns. I do appreciate what he's done for the Evidence Code, the work that he's done with the state legislature. He supported a lot of environmental groups that I agree with. But the, I think that's, I looked all over the MTC website to see, you know, is it a requirement? Is it in their bylaws? Is it somewhere? But the, the general feeling is you do have to be an elected official to be on the MTC board. So that was, my first concern is that we've got two people who put their names out there, but I think really Jake is the only viable candidate because he's an elected official. I did speak with him as well and expressed my concerns about everything that had happened and what some of the issues and concerns that I had were. So it was a good, a good conversation. But that was my first stumbling block was that I don't even know if he can be elected to the MTC or appointed. I mean, he, I know, I know they were both lawyers and so we're going to argue over interpretation of the statute. But what he was talking about was that, he was talking about that public officers, the quoted language that he put in his, in his letter, which is the second to last paragraph on the first page, talks about the section of the government code and saying that public officers, whether elected or appointed, may be appointed and serve as members of the commission. But that's still a public officer. That just means that you've either been elected to your position or you've been appointed to that elected position and then you will be elected at the next election cycle. So just like, while you don't get two attorneys in a room at any one time, we will disagree on interpretation of any statute that we are quoting. So that was my takeaway from that. So I'm, I'm comfortable reappointing Jake to the position, and I think that he is very cognizant of the backlash of everything that's been going on. We'll move forward accordingly. So, anyway, those are my two cents about.
All right. This is the moment we've all been waiting for.
Is there a treble roll?
I feel like I should be sharpening saws or some, my teeth over here or something. I'm assure you that's not going to happen. Yet we find ourselves in a difficult place here. We have two candidates, one of whom realistically, I fully agree, can't be a candidate because he's not an elected official. And we can split hairs all we want legally, Mr. Brittle Bowe. I can't see supporting him as a candidate personally. And I happen to know his values, from what I've heard over the years with him at SCTA, essentially might mirror Jake's in terms of land use values, meaning that I have no sense that he would be any more open to the concerns we have in this community and throughout this county. So, but I'd like to suggest, since we're in this bad position, there's another option that we haven't really discussed here. Not particularly useful one, but then this is not particularly anything that's, has any good end to it frankly, with the position we're in. And that's a simple no vote. That's the vote I'm going to make tonight, it's just a matter of conscience for me, but it's the same vote that the City of Sonoma made last week, I believe, after a lot of discussion, they essentially, for all the reasons we've talked about for numerous meetings that we've talked about at the legislative committee where every city agreed they had strong concerns about this, that this was problematic. And I say that because, as I said before, and I'll say it real briefly this time, I just can't vote for a representative who publicly says he won't follow, publicly says, militantly, he won't follow our consensus direction regardless of what we give it to him. Now, I fully don't expect a representative to do everything that we say and say everything we say, and I understand there'll be differences, but as Susan said, for the important things, for things that are crucial, truly game-changing in the county, yet not only do I expect you to come back, but since you're our representative, you're there to represent our county, for those, I expect you, if the direction significantly leans one way, to represent that. And Jake's been very clear, it won't. To my friend John's question, John Moore's question about, can he do more damage? I kind of crossed my fingers kidding, but I just heard today, and I believe Susan, you heard as well, that evidently the new chair of MTC is, plans to install Jake as the vice chair of the CASA task force if he continues on MTC. This is a task force that was supposed to represent the local municipalities and wasn't really supposed to be composed of people currently serving on MTC or A-Bag. So I have concerns about that. Now, the big question is, well, this is an important appointment, how can you have nobody appointed to it? That is not very helpful. And I have to admit, that's true. But I would make the argument, having somebody who very clearly, I think I can make the argument, is quite happy to push the agenda in a direction that's inimical to most of our constituents' interests throughout this county, is even more problematic. And given the fact that he's very adept at doing it, that makes it a serious concern. Now, I fully expect, if we were to vote no, like the city of, and every city in this county did this, I still fully expect the board supervisors, since there's been a lot of, as I understand, chilling coming out of background messages and saying that Jake has the votes, don't go against him. I fully expect that they'll support him and pass him. And I see, I know there are legal people positing that if we don't support, if Jake doesn't get five votes in mayors and councilmembers, he can't be appointed. I fully suspect he will, and I don't think anybody's going to hire a lawyer for mayors and councilmembers to go challenge that. It'll probably happen. But I feel at least we put the asterisks next to his name that this county doesn't support these actions in the past and going forward because this continues to go. MTC, and to a much lesser extent, A-Bag, but MTC will be and is lobbying very hard for this. He is lobbying very hard. I saw Jake, really amusing Facebook picture, I think was up at some event in Yosemite, working for CASA. Somebody made him a red cape that said CASA champion on it he was wearing. He is out supporting this and will continue to do so. So I find that at least having that asterisk of no, due to unique circumstances that we're in, we don't have any other candidates we can support, but we're not convinced that this particular representative will represent us. And that's why we have to, as a matter of conscience at least for me, vote no to that, even though it's perhaps not constructive as we may like to be. So that's where I'm at on it. I, I understand it's difficult, I'm not here to try and bend your arm. I know how I'm voting. And the only value I can say to it is number one, for the political fight that ensues, it's helpful in a small way because it sends that message to the legislature, communities are concerned about this, pay attention. You may want to come to the table and talk, something that wasn't done unfortunately in the run-up to December. And I, I will say the same thing about Jake as I'd say about Julie. If they were to publicly come out, right up to the moment the mayor has to vote, in unequivocally stated, despite whatever their personal convictions are, if the consensus value they hear from the majority of city councils in this county is in one direction, then that's what they'll support and push despite that. I would be happy to switch my vote to support them. But I don't, I know, I respect Mr. McKenzie, he's very clear in where he's at, you won't get that. And I don't think Ms. Combs will do that. I understand she's been asked to do that numerous times and it just hasn't unfortunately come out. So, so I don't know if that's sharpening teeth or anything, but that's all I have on it, and that's why, that's why I, I'm going to vote that way. Not a good place to be at, but unfortunately, it's what's the position we've all been put in.
All right. Whoops. Phone was off, sorry. So, thank you for that. Yeah, I'm going to, because I think there was some fogginess. Yeah, I'm gonna, because I think there was some fogginess at this end of the table. So I just want to come back to you two both. Um, and I'm not sure if I was clear enough, but again, I, I differ from sort of that long-term outlook that you have right now, a, and that's perfectly fine. Um, you know, you've got some other information that you've seen and heard that I have not. So, um, but to be clear, if I wasn't clear, that I would be voting for Jake, just, that's my thought. So, Councilmember Moore than Councilmember Harvey.
Well, this is a question I often go back to, and I don't know if it adds to the conversation or really takes away from the conversation, but had, had that information on the CASA compact been presented to the city councils throughout the process and yet still adopted and sent forward, I mean, would it have made a difference?
Yes.
Well, yeah, it would have, but I mean, because-
It might not have changed the vote.
But the communication part is huge, number one, because the Mayors and Council Members' Association of Sonoma County, let's be clear, there's representatives from every city, but it's a body. And, and so, these kinds of far-reaching issues that impact the entire county, in this case, nine Bay Area counties, needs to be brought to this group for a discussion. I mean, that, that's just one issue right there. Now, I don't know if, um, if you will, if the signatures, let's just call them for now, would have happened if, for example, if eight of the nine cities said, we're not in favor of this. I think it would, and it's not to say it wouldn't have happened and people wouldn't have pushed the agenda forward, but it would have been significantly more difficult than with no public input and no feedback from any of the councils. That's just my opinion. I'm not saying the results would have been different, but it would have been harder for those results to be the same. But we don't know, because they didn't happen that way. And the way that it did happen was incredibly inappropriate.
And much, and much like the letter that we wrote when we went through the different aspects of CASA and kind of said where, where we had issue with it, letting us know in advance would have allowed us as a mayors and councilmember group to discuss that and put forth for our representative, here are the places that we don't necessarily agree with that. And to your point on it may, may not have turned out that way or, or, or not, at least our thoughts would have been represented to the group. And for the better of all nine counties, it may not have ultimately won, you're right, but at least our, we would have been, uh, asked and our thoughts would have been given and our concerns would have been given, rather than nothing at all.
Right. If I might, Mr. Mayor, very briefly, is to back that up. The last time I conversed with Jake on the phone, prior to the first time we visited this issue, I guess a month ago now, something like that, when I explained my concerns about putting him forward to SMART, because of his lack of willingness to represent us in CASA at MTC, how could I trust him at any regional committee of importance now going forward? And I told him, I forget what he said that brought this word, but I said, no, we were talking about the timeframe, how this was done in just barely two weeks, in the middle of December, when every city council dependently goes dark, all of a sudden this went from a framework to a finished signed compact, which Jake signed. Uh, and I, and he disclaimed that that made a difference. And I said, no, that was done on purpose, because you know, if this had come in front of the city councils in this county, they would have told you no. He didn't argue with me. He kind of grumbled a bit, said he would talk to other people, um, but he didn't argue with that. And that I found interesting. Uh, all the things that were brought up in the city of Roanoke Park, I watched waiting for him to shoot any of them down at that meeting, and not a one. So, I mean, it's difficult to pick on somebody you've worked with and respected for years, and even in early years was kind of a mentor. And it's really difficult to pick on somebody when, by doing something in a way we often respect, which is devil may care, I don't care what the results are, I believe in something and I'm going to push it and I don't care what the cost is. But at the same time, I don't want to be seen as supporting that. We put our people at the League of Cities now, who will be doing the legislative fighting this year on this force, at a difficult place if while they're talking to legislators saying, people in Sonoma don't support this, there's too many problems, it needs to be scalable, we need to look at the funding you're talking about, there's a lot of things that need to be fixed. What position are they in when I say, well, yeah, but people voted to send Jake back to be on MTC and then actually be the vice chair of the new task force? That's a difficult place to put these people in. So it's not so much personal punishment. Uh, that's, provides little value, and I think my old friends had more than enough of that. But what it is, is something that is to strike a position that represents the values we want to make and get as much benefit as we can out of that. Because we're starting at a bad position. It's like starting an arm wrestling match with your arm here. This has gone out to the legislature in a form we're not happy with, that's the starting argument, not ones with our particular amendments that we could have and should have had to that. And now we have to go fight this fight. Uh, and so, that I think is the value of it. And that's probably another driving force for that, so, so thank you.
And I, um, I mean, I do want to reiterate too, that I would be still very willing to go to Sacramento with a cadre of other Sonoma County electeds, should there be, you know, a, a reason to go up there to lobby our legislatures about this issue. I have no issues whatsoever with going up and speaking to any and all of the legislatures, that legislators, that it would take. Not saying it'll make a difference, but it would make me feel a lot better if I got to do that. And, um, that remains to be seen, of course, still, so. So, I have a couple of potential unknowns here. You did say you were leaning towards Jake. And I think, I think what I really want to do, this is maybe out of, out of my mind, I was thinking of, just for this one item, actually doing a roll call vote, but not really a vote, just so we can be clear on what the direction's going to be from the council. Is that something that's appropriate? I mean, I could do thumbs up, thumbs down, I suppose. Okay. So, Councilmember Moore, um, going back, you know, you were leaning towards Jake. I mean, has this changed your opinion at all on who you would tell me to support?
I think at this point now, upon further discussion, I would be more inclined to go with a no vote.
With a no vote. Okay. And Councilmember Harvey?
I, I think Mark said it, um, Mark said it well. And that's that, you know, we have for many years worked with Jake. I respect Jake. I've learned a lot from Jake. And, and it, and it kills me that we're in this position, because he has done a lot of good, um, for transportation stuff in our area. But I, I don't have, I don't know, it's probably a bad word, but I don't have the trust that he will, you know, listen to anything that we have to say. And, and that's sad for me, because, you know, I do respect him a lot. And so, um, I, I think I, I have to be a, a no vote, you know, and I, and I, and it kills me to have to do that because of all the good work that he has done. But he's kind of lost my trust.
Vice Mayor?
Um, no, I'm still in favor of, of supporting Jake, because I think, um, if you're looking at a contribution that somebody has made for over the last 12, 15 years, um, I don't know if, uh, one misstep should overshadow that. So, that's, that's sort of where I am, and I, I think it's interesting that, um, folks in the audience who are always wanting to see diversity of thought on, uh, the podium, seem to be carrying on side conversations during all of our disagreeing. So, anyway, just wanted to comment on that as well. But, um, no, I'm still, um, behind Jake. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Lamond, have you changed your mind?
No. I know the suspense was killing you, but actually no, seriously, because this is, not only serious, but really, I mean, it's a sad place to be at. This, there's no joy here for any of this. It's only trying to find the best path out that actually represents the land use interests of people in Katati. And I think count, and I would just reiterate what Susan had, this is, you and I have been here a decade now. We've known this guy when we were brand new, after we lost Bob Coleman, he was one I think we both two talked to a lot when we had questions about things. And, you know, he was a good resource, God bless him, and, uh, and who knows? Jake may be behind Councilor Long and all of a sudden might get back to that trusted position. I certainly hope so and I'd love to see it. But like you, I'm not in that place of trust today, so I, I remain a no vote.
Yeah, um, that, it's unfortunate that we would be leaning three to two as a no vote, um, because I, I would still support Jake on this. Um, and I think the first time I ran 32 years ago, uh, was the first time he ran. And, um, and this isn't about loyalty or anything like that, it's really not. Um, this is about, you know, the knowledge that one individual has on transportation-related issues. And, and again, I, I've spoken my piece to him and told him where I thought he, there was a huge misstep on his part, um, and he took that with, you know, some sense of pride and decency and, you know, felt somewhat remorseful when he was talking to me about this, so, so I'm not going to change where I would lean, but, uh, it looks like then I would be taking back a three to two vote that is not voting for either applicant. Is that what I'm hearing? All right. Anything else on that? I think we've beat that one down pretty good.
Well, I, I think Mark said it earlier, if by some miracle, you know, uh, the situation changes such that, you know, there's a revelation that comes in and Jake comes in and, you know, whatever can make us regain some of that, you know, some of that, well, I won't do this, or I won't, you know, you have the leeway at least from me to, you know, consider that.
I would like to suggest for all these related votes to CASA, because there's a bunch of them that you'll be dealing with. I think you found historically that's a difficult place to be in. Why, we thank you for being there, Mr. Mayor. Uh, and I'd like to, I'll give you as much leeway as possible. Uh, the only thing I'd ask, if there was a statement to that effect publicly made, that it be clear and unequivocal, that it would be full support legislatively and at MTC slash ABAG, from whoever says that. So there's no ambiguity, but if we actually got that for Mr. McKenzie, I'd be happy to give him a thumbs up and be, uh, very pleased.
All right, so there's two from the no votes that could be changing votes should a certain statement be made. Councilmember Moore, are you, uh, in step with that or not?
I could be. I don't know if it'll occur, but I could be.
Well, I don't want, I don't want a could be.
I'm betting the paycheck it won't frankly, but if it did-
If it's an individual who's, who is so hell-bent on his position, regardless of what, uh, many of the, um, community wants, then I don't think that's serving the best of the whole. And, and that's an issue there.
So, but direction for me is, I don't want a could be. What I want to hear is, I would not change my vote if he was to say something like that, or I would change my vote and allow me to then, of course, it'd be four to one at that point if you didn't change your vote, I suppose. So I'm just looking for that kind of direction. I want clarity and direction.
Oh, no.
No. You're a stay no.
I'm a stay no.
Got it. All right, thank you.
Just so you have clarity.
That's what I'm looking for.
I'm fine with that, because I don't think we'll get that, and I don't want to put you actually, now that I'm listening to this. What is the position of absolute ambiguity that would satisfy us after or that he could make? That's a difficult call for you to make in that position. I mean, unless it was so uninvigorously clear, I would have a great problem with it, but if it was, and that's putting a lot on you to judge.
Maybe you could get a compact from him.
Well, we'd have to wait till December to do that. I don't know if we can wait that long, so. At any rate, I, I appreciate you being the one that has to go into lion's den and, and take a vote that's difficult, so, for what it's worth.
Yep. That's why I get paid more than the rest of you up here at the dais. All right, um, let's move on to the Airport Land Use Commission. There's one position, Sam Salmon has applied. Any issues? All good. And LAFCO, uh, I think we're going to have a no vote on this.
Something has to be done with this place. It has to be cleaned out.
Can I recuse myself on that?
All right, no issues there. That would mean Mark Landman, we'll have to get word to him. And, um, so this legislative task force on CASA, I'm so not in favor of another governing body. I mean, let me just start with that, because that's where I think that's exactly what this is, yet-
Yeah.
They're supposed to be, this was two appointments, two positions, I think?
Yep.
Yeah. And we only have one letter.
Correct.
Right. So, I mean, all right, so I think I'm going to make a point of saying, I think the entire concept is ludicrous and shouldn't be moved forward. That's even stronger than not voting for nobody, a double negative in that sense.
And I'll agree with that one, since I'm being bad tonight, yes.
Well, well, I mean, I, I think, well, that was one of our issues with the CASA compact, was, you know, there is no need for an additional body like this.
Well, here, and I would agree with you fully, Mr. Mayor, the problem, the only problem I see with, my first reaction was perhaps similar to one you had, I would guess now, hearing you talk was like, I'm not touching this, this is unnecessary, it's problematic. Uh, this is like closing the barn door after the horse is out and past the next county line, why are you doing this now? It's just an SOP. But then it occurred to me, this could be a vehicle for mischief. This will be a regional body, will have a lot of regional people on it, speaking in theory, representing the municipalities during this legislative arm wrestling process. And it strikes me, we should be darn sure to have people that actually represent our interests, because otherwise, yes, we just heard today, some of the people that are being stacked on there. And it's unfortunate, this whole thing has been such a disaster and nobody wants to go near these things. And I really applaud Ms. Belfort from Roanoke Park, was pretty busy, doing a lot of things, but stepping forward to do this. I would support her and I'd like to support giving you the flexibility, if anybody else that fits the bill of what we're looking for, is foolhardy or brave enough, whatever it is, to put their name forward at that meeting, to support them. I, I, I know you understand the land use values that Katati wants, we've discussed it enough here, and if we're lucky enough to get two, I'd love to see those spots filled with people that will support that.
Yeah, and that was the only sort of positive direction I was leaning towards in even putting a vote forward was, you know, can we get the right people on there who would at least advocate for the rest of us who would think that this concept needs work and is not good as it's currently written?
Yeah.
Well, I, I don't see how it's going to do much of anything. It says that they're going to meet once a month during the legislative, legislative season. That's not often enough, and this stuff is happening, uh, you know, I'll give my report, but there's, I don't know, two, four, six, eight, 10, 12, 14, 16, 18, 20, 22, 24, 25 bills that are already on this, that are like going at lightning speed. So, these guys meeting once a month, stuff's gone.
You've hit the key point of this. It's, I believe, honestly, a fig leaf, perhaps, that's a better way to describe, but it's a fig leaf that can be used against our interests, potentially if it was stacked up with the supporters to say a happy thumbs up, then that's what the legislatures will hear. At least if we can, if it's slowed down enough with enough representation, at least from Sonoma County, for Sonoma County interests are putting forward their concerns. And I think we'll see that from other counties too, from the feedback we're seeing, then perhaps it reduces its ability to, number one, be used for that, and number two, be a problematic force that can say, oh, no, 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 look, municipalities support this, they're voting yes here at this thing we put together specifically for that. I mean, my first reaction was to say, no, 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 the Mayors and Council Members Association speaks for Sonoma County, we don't need this. But then I recognize, true as that is, this is going to roll one way or the other, so we better get in there and, you know, if you're not at the table, you're on the menu, right? So, that's, that's what leads me to appreciate Gina volunteering the time to go wrestle with this, even though it is, as you rather, I believe correctly, said, somewhat pointless. At least she's protecting us to some degree.
Yeah, I, I mean, we have a better, you know, we have a better chance of finding out what's going on and reacting, you know-
If only there was another mayor that would help.
Ledge Committee or, or, um, you know, having, uh, League of California Cities, kind of, they're up there in Sacramento and they can kind of keep, you know, sending that stuff to us on a more regular basis. I just don't see how this is going to be very-
Some dynamic young mayor who's-
Yeah, you lost my vote, lost my vote right there when I said young.
Yeah, you lost my vote, lost my vote right there when I said young.
And, and willing to go to Sacramento and fight the good fight. That would be a perfect person to have.
Well, these meetings, these meetings are in San Francisco.
I think they're going to do them over the phone too, if you want. I don't, I don't know, but it'll be, yeah, it'll, it is what it is. And I'm only halfway joking when I talk to you into doing it, Mayor Delosso. But you'd be a good voice there.
But yeah, I, I agree too, though it does seem very redundant, and it seems like we'd be able to react quicker as a city to sending our own letters and individually.
Oh, we will do that, yeah.
Than, than having yet another meeting.
Legislative body.
So, yes.
Well, I think that it feels like they did such a poor job of communicating that this is sort of coming through the back door and it says to report back and, you know, advise people. It's their backdoor way of saying, oh, well, now we have this group and they're going to keep you informed because we didn't let you know what's going on. And then it'll be their fault when you don't get what you.
Now that the snowball's rolling down the hill.
Yeah.
Does anybody at the dais have a problem with putting Mayor Belforte's name forward?
No.
No, I'm in thinking ahead, uh, Mr. Mayor. If the Board of Supervisors is going to appoint somebody and they're leaning forward Supervisor Rabbit as Chair and appointment of Mr. McKenzie, if he gets back around on there?
I'm not sure if, I, I don't believe Supervisor Rabbit, I haven't heard, at least he'll be Chair of this task force.
No, but he would be Chair of the Board of Supervisors.
Oh, yes.
Right, and they're going to be making the appointment to this particular task force.
Well, from the, from the names we give them. So if we don't give a second name, they will be, I imagine they could appoint a second name if they're choosing.
So if, even though we may have a no vote for, uh, McKenzie.
He didn't apply.
No.
For this.
Right, for the MTC.
Oh.
Didn't you indicate earlier that you thought that he was going to be appointed to the task?
Oh, no, he's, he said today, and Susan, you were there.
Yeah, it was confusing to me. Yes, yeah.
Scott Haggerty, he had indicated, it isn't done yet, but indicated that he was going to make, like the way they do that, Jake the Vice Chair over at the CASA Task Force, which caught my eye because spoke right to what you said, concerns about, oh, now what problems are you going to create with this? And also, the whole task force, I believe in the, if we look back in the documents here, they talked about this specifically being people who aren't currently serving on A-BAG.
That's what it says.
Or MTC. So that kind of is problematic in my viewpoint, but I think, you know, it's not unusual, sometimes the decks are stacked a little in political endeavors, and maybe that's just a small part of that.
So to bring that back around, if we're, if, I would be more inclined to support Ms. Belforte, because then she would be, um, in a position to, uh, have a balance if we do have.
Counterbalance, voice reason.
Correct.
Even though if you read her letter, I mean, there was some interesting statements made in there, following the recommendations of Supervisor Rabbit, things like that. So, um, however.
Yeah, I mean, I, if I didn't already have so much going on, I would have considered this, but it's just like too much.
If we only had a, if we only had a young, dynamic, wack chair who was willing to step into the fray.
Boy, you're throwing everything out there tonight, aren't you?
It's like, oh my God.
Yeah. You need a mayor that's going to retire from their regular job and would have more time.
Hang in there, it's coming.
All right.
Three days.
So, so we were, uh, all in agreement on moving Gina's name forward?
Yes.
That's what I thought I heard, okay. So, uh, just to recap, if I can, uh, for the A-BAG Regional Planning Committee, uh, we are voting three to two in favor of Susan Adams, so we would put her name forward. And the only other one in question, um, since the other ones were all one-name applicants and they've applied and they're, we're moving them all forward, is another three to two vote for a nobody vote for MTC. However, uh, two of those three nobody votes would be willing to vote for somebody, Jake McKenzie, this is really getting out of hand here, um, should he, up to the point of voting, make a statement that he would indeed have his best interest for the county as a whole.
And follow our consensus direction on all legislative and MTC matters as related to CASA. I would look for a great deal of specificity so it was clear and there's no wiggle room. If you actually got that, then I would.
Yep.
Give you a thumbs up. If you get, if you're able to get that from him, uh, I think you should be in higher government because you're wasted here.
And I'm far too smart for that.
Yes.
Let me just say. All right, um, I think I've got.
Do you have marching orders?
Pretty clear directions.
Ready for April 11th.
If I can remember all of them, that would be.
And did we add some flexibility for you on that CASA Task Force too, just in case? I don't know if any more names will come in, but if we're having that conversation, trying to think, hey, we need a second thing, I bet there's more. I think you see more, so I'd like you to have some flexibility.
Sure.
And I, and I trust your judgment.
Was there a deadline for that particular, I, I couldn't remember seeing a deadline.
I'm not sure if we're out of.
Twenty-fourteen.
It was, so that's passed.
Yeah.
So then it's highly unlikely there will be any other names unless.
Well, I think they can take them from the floor.
Yeah.
They probably can take names from the floor.
Given this, I wouldn't be surprised at anything.
Just the, just the deadline in the letter, but, um, when I spoke to Fred Castro, he indicated that, um, he's like, yeah, just, guys get it done when you have your next meeting. So, uh, because he, he recognized that the, well, I think they rushed to get the letter out and they didn't realize that there's like a process to appoint people. And, um, when, when I conveyed to him that our legislature, our City Selection Committee isn't until April 11th, he's like, well, okay, that's fine.
Okay.
So, it didn't sound like.
It has to go to the Board of Supervisors.
Yeah.
And then it has to go to the Board of Supervisors for ratification, yeah. So, um, I, I think, even though the letter says send nominations to Fred Castro, he said, no, don't send nominations to me.
Okay.
So I think it sounds like it's pretty open up until the day of the actual City Selection Committee.
All right. I may try to contact some folks too, just to see if they've heard of any other people that might be interested and just see who those names are. Very good. All right. Thank you for that discussion. We'll go to item 12, the City Manager's Report.
Yes. Jeez, alas.
Sorry.
All right, so. All right, um, so one thing, just, I think, as I recall, I, although I couldn't find the note here, um, I believe the League of California Cities is having a Legislative Action Day in Sacramento, April 24th. Does that sound familiar? I, I believe I saw an email come through to that effect, and so I'd imagine we'd be hearing stuff from the League of California Cities in the near future about what that push is, presumably around housing is going to be one of the, one of the things, I would imagine. But that, that is coming up, um, as, as I recall. And then.
The 24th, you're right.
The 24th, yeah, okay. Yeah. Um, all right, so on other things, uh, the Laguna Bypass Sewer, that's, um, just final punch list stuff, so we're almost done with that. And the water main replacement is underway. And then on the, um, recreation side of things, uh, last week, we had the spring break camp and, um, and the highlights for that camp, we concluded spending the afternoons at La Plaza Park and on Thursday getting a special tour of the, of the Veranda Fletti Ranch, where they got to, the kids got to see the new baby goats and other animals. So it was, I saw them, I saw them out my window, they were having a great time. And then, um, this coming Saturday, March 30th, we're going to host our Second Annual Community Yard Sale from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM in the Cotati Room here behind City Hall. On the Friday afternoon before the sale, so this Friday, um, March 29th, we'll be accepting new or gently-used donations for the event from 4:00 to 7:00 PM. And it's a great way to do some spring cleaning for a good cause. The proceeds benefit, um, the Recreation Department to help continue to offer free and low-cost programs and events to, um, people that need that, low-income, um, that they need income assistance or they need help, um, affording some of the programs we have. And then the leftover items after the event are donated to a local nonprofit. And then, of course, um, the following Sunday on April 7th, the Historical Society's having their, um, annual old-fashioned chicken barbecue from noon to 4:00 PM here in the, in and around the Cotati Room. And so come on down if you are around to enjoy, um, lunch, live music, a bake sale, silent auction, and a car show throughout the day. And for tickets, you can call 794-0305. And then the weekend after that, April 14th, we're hosting our Second Annual Bunny Brunch and Egg Hunt in the Cotati Room. The Cotati Room's getting a lot of action these, pretty much every weekend. And the event is for families to come have brunch. Um, I hear there's excellent chefs that day, um, and visit the bunny, make fun crafts, and finish the morning off with an egg hunt for, um, children. So, um, people like me aren't allowed apparently to hunt for eggs, it's only for kids. And, um, it's expected to sell out again, we have less than thirty spaces available. We had eighty's, we have eighty spots and, um, we still only have thirty available at this point, so purchasing tickets early is recommended and can be done through the city website, because there's no guarantee that there'll be any, any tickets available at the door. And then, um, we're also still accepting applications for upcoming summer camp season. Um, these are like rec camp staff. The job posting can be found on the city website. And then for information on this or any of our programs or to volunteer, please contact Ashley Wilson at 665-4222 or A. Wilson at cotati-city.org, or you always can get, um, rec information from our website and our Facebook page. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions for the City Manager?
I was just wondering if you could define chef?
Very loosely, um, although they do a very good job with pancakes, eggs and stuff.
That was it. Thank you.
So no, yeah, nothing too fancy, no crepes, I don't think we're making crepes.
No questions down at this end? City Manager?
All right.
Thank you very much. Then we'll go to City Councilmember Reports. Councilmember Landman, we'll start with you.
And I have no report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Skilman?
Uh, just briefly, I went to, Farmster is trying to do an open house, which they're calling the Open Farm, uh, every third Friday, but because of the rain, it was pushed to Saturday. So I went by there and, uh, got to spend some time and talk to citizens who are there and bringing their kids to check it out and ask questions. And, um, we're still waiting any day now for the piglets, so I will report back, but that's all I have.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Moore?
I do not have any reports, but we do have a special REMF meeting coming up on Thursday.
REMF meeting?
REMF.
Very good. Councilmember Harvey?
I'm sorry, I have reports.
All right, thank you very much for that.
Oh, okay.
And now we're going to go on to item, oh, I'm sorry.
All right. So, um, I did attend, uh, Santa Rosa's, uh, CASA meeting today, so it was basically presented by MTC, the same slides that, that we've kind of all seen. Um, they are gathering, uh, feedback. The person that did it was Rebecca Long from MTC. And, um, the newer part that I hadn't seen was basically, um, three different slides, um, on all the bills that are in process, and there are over twenty-one bills that are kind of addressing all of, all of these different things. And they're at, um, various stages, so we're going to have to kind of keep on top of them. And a lot of them have some of the scary things in there that, you know, we, um, you know, we were afraid of, they are in these bills. So I think we need to keep our eyes and ears open on them. Um, I also went to the Waste Management Agency, um, meeting, and, um, we approved the draft budget, and I'll come back, um, for final budget, um, next month. But we also approved, uh, changes to the fees. The fees for, um, the Waste Management Agency haven't changed since 2010. I don't understand how time flies, I, I can't believe it's, um, been this far, but basically, um, the organics, uh, fees will be increasing from sixty dollars a ton to sixty-seven point two-five cents per ton. And then the agency fee will be going, uh, from four dollars and eighty-five cents a ton, um, to five dollars and forty cents a ton. And the question that a lot of folks asked is, well, what will that mean to the ratepayers and what it ultimately, every city's different, because we all have our different agreements and all of that, but, um, the average, um, change for a thirty-two gallon cart, which is what most people have, um, would be fifty-six cents a month, is the average, average change. So that's happening and, you know, we held it off for as long as we can, but, you know, it, it's really killing us to have to out, outhaul all of that, uh, organics, um, until we can get, uh, new composting, uh, facility, and it just gets more and more expensive. So, we did, we held on as long as we could. Lastly, there's more legislation with that that's going to be killing us there too, because there's some new bills that are forcing, uh, new, um, new things with or, organics that are really going to, um, put some really heavy requirements on cities, including some pretty stiff fines. So I think we're going to have to keep on top of all of those bills. I also attended the groundwater meeting, uh, which was another interesting meeting. Um, we were set to, um, set, um, the sustainability fees for the next three years, and there's been a lot of work that's been going on for the last year, um, to set that in, just as a, a high level, where it was, um, shaking out at was that rural residential groundwater users, um, in other words, people in rural areas with the well. Um, it would range between, somewhere between eight dollars and thirteen dollars a year. Um, large groundwater users would pay between sixteen to twenty-six per acre foot of water pumped annually. And urban well owners, um, would pay between one dollar and three dollars a year. Those are people that are hooked up to city water, but they also have a well on their property, so their amount is a little bit, um, different. Then they have differences, um, like vineyards with hundred acre of irrigated vines would pay between nine hundred and sixty to fifteen hundred dollars annually. And they have different amounts depending upon what the crop is, so they've kind of looked at, at the different crops, but that's as an example, um, for that. So these fees would be levied for three years, um, after which time the board could end, extend, or replace them, because it will take three more years for us to develop the groundwater sustainability plan, which has to be submitted to the state and approved by the state, and so on and so forth. So, um, we thought we were there with this, and the county representatives kind of threw a monkey wrench on all of it and said that they wanted to look at another alternative. And so, they are going to come back with some other alternative. What they were talking about is the possibility of picking up for the next three years, the, um, county rural residential well owners' fees as a possibility. I don't know what that means, I don't know where they're going to get the money, I don't know if they'll be able to pull this off, but, um, we'll find out more, uh, next meeting. But yeah, we were like at the eleventh hour, um, and they kind of threw this out there, so time will tell. But, uh, yeah, we've gotten a lot of our, um, far on this. Um, it ta, took a year to get to that point, we were getting, you know, so close, but we'll have to wait and see, so more to come on that. That's all I, I have to report.
Thank you, very good, very good, thank you. So, uh, the only thing I really have to report out on is, uh, this coming Sunday, uh, KRCB has invited, I guess is the word, uh, myself, and I've already talked to Councilmember Landman about this, um, to speak about the CASA compact on one of their programs. So, um, I don't know who the other guests are, but there will be sort of those in favor and those, me, opposed, so, uh, as, as it currently stands. So, um, it's supposed to be from 5:30 to 6:00, and so my guess is, you know, I'll have all of about a hundred and twenty seconds to say what I have to say, so it'll be incredibly succinct and, um, we'll make the best of it. So, stay tuned if you, uh, are around on this Sunday, the 31st, if you want to listen to that.
Please, so KSRO?
KRCB.
Oh, KRCB, okay.
And I don't know if it's television or radio.
I think it is television.
I think it's television.
It'll be nice to see you on television, but not in your ranger uniform.
Maybe I'll wear it.
So, wow.
You never know.
Who knows? Yeah, that might pull well, go for it.
You never know.
You have this makeup done on you.
That's right. Um, so it's 9:56, before we go to the next item, I'd entertain a motion to extend the meeting after the 10 o'clock hour.
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, so there we are. Opposed? All right, so there we are. We are at item 14, which is Public Comment on Non-Auction Agenda Items. Ms. Alderman?
I'm barely awake. It's been so long since I've been able to speak. Um, okay. Um, the ma, City Manager's Report, it needs to be a lot more comprehensive. All we, all it seems to be is a recreation, um, uh, advertisement for the recreation. We, people are asking me about the hotel project. We've heard nothing about when Community Development Director is going to be put in. Um, anything that has to do with the city, other than the recreation part, should be covered in that City Manager's Report. We're not hearing, you're keeping a lot of us in the dark. Things like also the marijuana licenses, how many peoples, um, signed up for the future. Those kind of things, we need to know. Okay, future agenda items. Um, I had a really good response from, um, the Smart Train and, um, the Sonoma County Transit. In the middle of the night, I redesigned the whole Catati-Rona Park local routes, and they sent me some pass, Smart Train passes and all this kind of stuff. So hopefully we can get things going on actually having buses that meet up with the train and go two ways. Um, we need to, um, also address weed abatement, um, where I will be, s, some of the council members have four-feet weeds and they will be on Facebook again, because it's your responsibility and you don't seem to care about the public safety of this name, of, of everything. Um, it's your, in your city code. Um, the, um, also, um, homelessness, of course. Senior, senior services, um, there's nothing here. My, you know, there's no way to get to Rona Park, Santa Rosa for senior citizens if they don't have a car. There's no public transportation, there's nothing. There's no senior classes, anything here in the, for the, for the seniors. Um, and, um, what else would I like on a future agenda? Um, the, but mostly also, I really like, a lot of people have been asking me about the hotel. I know, um, the sewer plan, um, delayed it, but his, your initial thing said, he said 2019, um, it would be done, and you guys said June 2021, 2021. So we need to figure, people want to know.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Berich?
Which, Lori, reminds me, you know, we haven't seen any representatives from our mobile home parks here at these meetings for years. Uh, you know, when I've talked to them last, they are just so disgusted by all this, uh, that they don't, they don't even bother coming, and they used to come a lot. Uh, we had a representative tonight speaking about this Kessing, uh, this Kessing project, ranch project. And, um, she said something to the effect that housing is out of reach to a lot of people, words to that effect. And, and it really got me thinking that, you know, it's, it's out of reach for a lot of people because government gets its hands involved in all this and trying to, trying to effectuate affordable housing, and they fail so miserably that housing does become more out of reach all the time. And have, we let the free market do its job, and had we sold that property years ago, we might see development on that property there. We might see some healthy families living on that property by now, paying taxes, um, being part of this community. But you keep kicking this can down the road, trying to get, uh, get, uh, government involved, which raises the prices of the hous, housing. With all these, um, regulations and restrictions, it's just crazy. Now, you may have read in the, in the news recently that Oakland, the city of Oakland, has partnered up with four churches in, in Oakland to assist in parking and housing the homeless. I would suggest that you take a look at those stories and see if you have any time to try to partner up with one church in this town to try to address our homeless problem sometime in our lifetime. So I hear you all tonight discuss the fact that you feel a little bit upset, a little bit miffed, a little bit frustrated that your representatives are not representing you properly and so forth. And we heard a lot about that tonight. Well, welcome to my world. So you know what it feels like. Not a bad thing, a little tough love to watch you people go through your frustrations. Mr. Lammon says tonight that he, uh, sees that some of us in the audience, all two of us that are here tonight, are not interested in what the man has to say sometimes when we're discussing quietly between ourselves back there, very respectfully. Well, the fact is, Mr. Mr. Lammon, I want you to remember, we don't work for you. You don't pay us. You work for us at our pleasure. So when we sit here, do not mock us because we happen to be exchanging some ideas while you happen to be in deep, uh, speech mode. It's unbelievable. And Mr. Deloso tonight says that he is willing to go to Sacramento, maybe with a congregation, to speak to your representatives up there and, and let off a little steam, even though you may not, they may not agree with you. Well, welcome to our world out here in the peanut gallery. And it wouldn't, it, it wouldn't be a bad idea, sir, if you went to Sacramento on your own. If you have to drive up on your, on, by yourself and you represent your thoughts and your feelings and your positions, I would applaud that. No one needs to hand-hold you, sir. You just go up there and you just, just say your, say your piece. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes. And I do drive to places like that on my own. Thank you very much. So you should, could, go ahead and applaud me now if you'd like. All right. Um, that session is over. We are now moving to item 15, which is Information Received After the Agenda Was Posted. I assume we have nothing. And we're at item 16, which is Adjournment to Closed Session. This is Conference with City Labor Negotiations, Government Code Section, as we all know, 54957.6. City Designated Representative, City Manager or Designee Employee Organization, the Catati Police Officers Association. Is there any public comment on this issue? Seeing none, we will have it closed and we will adjourn to closed session. Thank you. @Officially1004.